Good evening.
Good evening, please. All right, I am calling this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting on April 29th at 6 o'clock to order unless there's an objection. Seeing no objection, this meeting is called to order. Councilman Price, can you lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
We will now have our public comment section. We allow 30 minutes with each speaker being allocated three minutes. Mr. Hickey, if you could approach the microphone, introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes. We have a new clock. I think you've seen it. Right ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Bob Hickey. I'm a 48-year citizen of Dunwoody. I've been here a long time, probably more than you guys. I'm here to speak on Agenda Items 6, 7, and 12 tonight. For those here in the audience who are not aware of it, and a reminder for the city council members and the mayor, six months ago, we had a $60 million bond referendum for multipurpose trails and parks. This referendum was soundly defeated 57% to 43% in a citizen's vote. A total of 4,814 Dunwoody citizens, including me, voted no on unwanted excessive expenditures on multipurpose trails and parks. I'm here to request that Items 6 and 7 be removed from the Consent Agenda to the Business Action Agenda so that we can hear the discussion and the individual vote on these two matters. In addition, on Item Number 6, the North Shalifer Trail, this was not even a priority in the bond referendum discussion that took place last summer and fall. It was never discussed, never mentioned in any way, shape, or form in any discussions. It was not included as one of the items in the $60 million. And we had lots of questions at the time as to why they were not legally binding projects. So I guess this was the surprise that was going to come in after the bond was approved. So I'd like to see this discussed tonight. Item 12 is a request for $8 million in federal funding for Item 7 and the previous outrageous unwanted village crossroads project, which includes a roundabout, a roundabout at Roberts Road in Shambly Dunwoody. No Dunwoody citizen, especially those in the Winter Hall subdivisions, want this roundabout that would impede their traffic access to Shambly Dunwoody. What is, this is for a plan to get federal money. What happens if their bad money doesn't come through? This is $15 million, okay? 15 million. Voters overwhelmingly voted against the bond resolution. We want a plan to provide the required public police funding, police funding and staffing, and we want a plan to ensure that the structural deficit which has been talked about will be solved. Both need to be presented as a plan and let the public comment their own. Thank you for considering my request on Items 6, 7, and 12 to be defeated or deferred. Thank you.
Lizette Warren. Approach the microphone. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Lizette Warren. I'm here to speak regarding agenda items relating to the parks and multi-use trails. As a city of Dunwoody resident and homeowner, I am increasingly frustrated as city leaders continue to turn a deaf ear to what residents say is important. Some time ago, there was a survey, actually it was a good amount of time ago. There was a survey put out by the city. Results showed residents were concerned with public safety, yet all we heard was trails and parks. As of late, the bond referendum results demonstrated again. Residents did not want more debt, trails, and parks. Week after week, I read in the crier, "The city is operating in a deficit." We need the city. We read that the city is trying to raise the millage rate that will increase our property taxes at a time many are having trouble paying for basic expenses. Dunwoody Police Department has outlined the need for more funding to keep pace with increased crime. Police routinely patrolled my neighborhood in the past, our neighborhoods, yet I never see them anymore. I asked a police officer why I did not see any more patrols. He said, "We hardly have enough staff to keep up with the 24/7 crime activity in the perimeter mall area, the needs of which will only increase as development continues." I myself no longer go to perimeter mall. I go to Avalon. I go to Target north of here as well because I don't feel safe. Parks and green spaces in the right locations and the cost of future upkeep must be balanced with other needs of our community. Mayor and city council members, please listen to your constituents. Thank you.
Patty Baker. Patty Baker, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Patty Baker. So nice to see everyone. I would like to thank you. I'd like to thank you for all you do. I recognize that all the good intentions in the world are difficult when there's a lot of negative energy in the city, and I appreciate what you've done and tried to do to adhere to the original vision, spirit, entrepreneurialism, and positive intentions of the city. I was 45 when Dunwoody became the newest city in the United States. I just turned 60. My children, like these young girls, were eight and 13 years old when promises of safe access for all were made in the city. They're now 24 and 29, and you still can't buy a loaf of bread in the city safely on a bicycle. So I appreciate what you're doing, and I know how hard you're working. A special shout out to Joe. My intention here tonight was to thank you, and especially to thank you and the Sustainability Commission for continuing to honor sustainability heroes. And it is my great pleasure and honor to be here tonight to celebrate my neighbor, Jason Metzger, and his family, Paige, his son Reed, for the amazing work that he does on a daily basis, both in his vocation and avocation, his passion, his daily habits, and his job and life calling, especially in a city where that is difficult to do that. I ride my bike as transportation in the city, and I risked my life to come here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. You can come. Please, come on. Sorry. Oh, maybe. Oh. Okay, one person speaking, is that right? Or, okay, do you have three cards? Okay, come on up. I'll need your card before, I'm sorry. Jasmine, you'll have three minutes.
Go ahead. Yes. All right, good evening, Mayor Deutsch, members of the Dunwoody City Council and staff. My name is Jasmine Hooper. I'm with the American Heart Association, and I stand before you tonight to emphasize the importance of updating Dunwoody's Clean Indoor Air Act. Our community's health and well-being are at stake, particularly when it comes to protecting citizens from the dangers of secondhand smoke. According to data from the CDC, we know that secondhand smoke exposure contributes to approximately 41,000 deaths among non-smokers and 400 deaths in infants each year. We also know that even brief exposure to secondhand smoke can cause immediate harm to the cardiovascular system and increasing the risk of heart disease and stroke. Over the past several months, we've worked diligently with Councilmember Joe Sekinder and collaborating with city staff on smoke-free policy language that reflects the unique needs of Dunwoody. And the news of a new hooka establishment which is operating outside of the bounds of the existing 2019 ordinance underscores the urgency of this matter. In this work, we observed a concerning trend across municipalities in Georgia where the arrival of one hooka shop, one vape or tobacco establishment paves the way for many more to follow suit. And this rapid growth of these kinds of establishments pave, excuse me, pose several health risks and also create a culture and a precedent that normalizes tobacco use, especially among impressionable youth. As a resident who lives on the border of Dunwoody and Sandy Springs on Hammond Drive near Perimeter Mall, I spend a lot of time in Dunwoody. I frequently patronize Dunwoody establishments, and I have a personal investment in the health of this city. I deeply appreciate the vibrancy and the wonderful amenities that Dunwoody has to offer, and I'm committed to ensuring Dunwoody's continued well-being. I urge the city to reconsider and add the Clean Indoor Air Act text amendments back onto the agenda for a vote and know that the American Heart Association, along with our partners and network of advocates, are here to support the city in its efforts to create a healthier Dunwoody. And I have with me some members from the Dunwoody Women's Club to share their thoughts as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Linda Mote. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, I am the new club president for Dunwoody Women's Club. We had this young woman come and speak to us recently about the Clean Air Act. We are concerned about having these kinds of establishments within the city of Dunwoody. I don't live here anymore, but I did for 25 years. I am over in Berkeley Lake, but I come to Dunwoody all the time. Obviously, as the club president, I need to be here. I shop in Dunwoody. And the last thing we want is for the city to have smoking. We're especially afraid for our young people. I'm so disappointed when I see young people smoking because I have lived with a father who smoked, and I had secondhand smoke. I've had colon cancer. My husband died from lung cancer. My father had heart disease. So it's very important to me to recognize the dangers of smoking. So please consider what she just said about adding this to the city of Dunwoody.
Thank you. Diane Norris, you'll have three minutes. Thank you for joining us.
Yes, good evening, council members. I too am not a resident of Dunwoody, but spend a lot of time in Dunwoody and is past president of the Dunwoody Women's Club. And having Jasmine as our speaker this month, we wholeheartedly endorse this, what she wants to do, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I believe that concludes public comment. We'll have another public comment section at the end of the meeting, should anyone still be here and would like to address us. Sharon, are you gonna read these? No.
Do you want me to start?
Would you like to start?
Yes.
Yes, oh, right. Councilor Lotenbacher, I believe you have an agenda for, an motion to make, please.
Yes, Mayor, I move to remove the Item 3 of our Agenda Economic Development Update due to the absence of the Speaker.
Okay. Moved by Catherine, seconded by John. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right. Who is presenting the next item, Eric? Who is Sustainability Staff, or is it Michael Prey? I mean, Michael Prey is on my agenda, so welcome.
That's right.
Welcome. Sometimes staff steps in and does the actual introduction. Welcome, Michael. We're so pleased you're here to present these awards.
Evening, Council.
Good evening.
I am Michael Prey, and I'm here with Larry Hyman. Larry's gonna take a moment to award our Sustainability Heroes, and then I'll come back and provide an update on the award.
Thank you.
All right, good evening. So I will be presenting the Sustainability Hero Awards for 2023. And we have two categories. One is individual and one is organization. And for the individual, we are happy to present this award to Jason Metzger. Jason wins this award for many reasons. First, he served on the City of Dunwoody Sustainability Committee for many years until April of 2023, and during that time, he was instrumental in helping to implement many programs, including hazardous waste collection events, e-waste events, and he served on the committee on the pillars for transportation and air quality. So he did many, many things on the committee. He also epitomizes sustainability in his personal life. He bikes as much as possible. In fact, I think he goes most places by bike, and when not, he's taking his, he drives an electric vehicle. He grows an organic garden. He even apparently uses a push reel mower for his yard, which is pretty impressive. I'd like to learn how to do that myself. He was also the liaison for the Solarize Dunwoody Campaign a number of years ago. And he's been supporting the committee even since he left the committee last year. He's come to our Greenspeak events. In fact, just the other week, we had an event, and he came from a training program from his work where he was in another part of Georgia for three days. Took the train, took Marta to the Dunwoody, to the station, took the bus, and then walked the last mile to attend our event, which we are very appreciative of. So he's always learning and trying to incorporate sustainability into his personal life. So it's our honor to present this award to him.
Congratulations. Jason, would you like to say a few words? You don't have to, no pressure.
Thank you.
And then we'll come down and take a picture.
Well, thank you for the kind words, and thank you also to Patty for the wonderful words. I would like to thank the Sustainability Committee for selecting me as the 2023 Sustainable Hero. I'm honored and humbled to be nominated and selected out of the many citizens doing things large and small to help move the needle. I know many of you share my passion and have done a lot. So it's important for all of us to remember that even seemingly minor actions can have a tremendous impact. And I appreciate the city continuing this tradition to highlight and celebrate some of these small steps. I also want to take a minute to congratulate the city for continuing to achieve the ARC Gold Certification and to give praise to the Community Development Department and to Allegra for leading much of those efforts and documenting all of it. It's a lot that is done. And I also appreciate all the volunteer hours our Sustainability Committee dedicates in educating, advocating, and encouraging Dunwoody to do more. I'm invigorated by the city's efforts on safe streets and multi-use trails, and I am one of the, part of the 40-something percent that voted for the bond, but just because the bond didn't pass does not mean that the majority of Dunwoody citizens do not want to move forward on the multi-use trails. I'm looking forward to Jonathan's update in a few minutes, and I do encourage the city to continue to take bolder actions on these initiatives and others, such as setting a goal for net zero carbon emissions. We're fortunate to live in an area where we have the ability and the resources to make sustainable choices. Let's consider how to give back to nature rather than continuing to take these choices, not only benefit the planet, but also our own well-being. In addition to nurturing the soul, things like trading a car trip for a bicycle ride or eating less meat improve our own personal health. So let's be all in to reduce our collective footprint on our precious earth. Thank you.
Okay, I'll continue. We have another recipient of the 2023 Sustainability Hero Awards, and this is for the organization category. And this goes to Lloyd Fisher of Oak Avenue Landscaping. So many residents in Dunwoody complain about loud noise, the loud noise and the air pollution that's caused by lawn care services. We all know that leaf blowers and commercial-sized lawn mowers are loud and release a lot of air pollution, air pollutants. Oak Avenue Landscaping is doing its part to change that and provides an alternative option for residents and businesses who would like a cleaner, quieter alternative. This company is an all-electric landscaping business. And not only that, but all of the electric equipment they use is powered by batteries that are powered by solar panels. So therefore, this business has essentially zero carbon emissions, which is very impressive. The Sustainability Committee thinks this is a wonderful alternative to traditional landscaping companies, and so we are happy to present the 2023 Sustainability Hero Award in the organization category to Lloyd Fisher of Oak Avenue Landscaping.
Would you like to say a few words? No pressure, but please do.
Sorry, I haven't prepared anything formal to say. I think my kids have a lot more to say than I do.
Your kids are adorable.
Thank you. But yeah, I think just kind of circling back to how I, how I,
It's okay. Let them come. It's fine. There's nothing. It's fine. It's fine. Right. It's fine. It's all good.
But yeah, just circling back to like how I came with, came up with the idea. I just, I was, I found this fact that a two-cycle blower, like a gas blower, that runs for a single hour has the same impact on the environment as taking a regular car from Atlanta to the Mexican border, which is, it blew my mind immediately. And, you know, I think, I think a lot of people complain about the noise factor, but I think the environmental impact that a lot of these larger companies are emitting every day is a serious, you know, it's a serious factor that needs to be mitigated. And that's, that's really what I wanted to do is just see if I could, you know, just get started and see if I can make a small impact. And fortunately, you know, the business has been growing, and it's been great. There's a lot of support for it, and yeah, I think just as a whole, really appreciate everything you are doing and also the Sustainability Committee as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I will take a picture.
That was fun. So appreciate the opportunity to come up here and just provide a brief update on how we're doing in the sustainability plan. What I'll do tonight is I'll share a little bit more about the context of the plan for those that aren't as familiar with it. I'll talk about where we, you know, some of the highlights for what we've accomplished in 2023, and then, you know, a few more planned accomplishments for 2024, some of the focus areas that we're gonna focus on. So just a little context, the sustainability plan was adopted in 2021, and the goals are achieved through various Dunwoody departments. So it's not our team doing it. It's us working and collaborating very tightly with the departments, and the goals are achieved through them. So we meet with each department director and collaborate on how they're going to achieve those adopted sustainable goals. These goals are aligned with the ARC or Atlanta Regional Commission's Green Communities Goals. Jason mentioned that. And these goals are aimed at improving local sustainable living. This helps expand our vision and provides a measurable structure for our city's sustainable, sustainable future. In 2023, Dunwoody recertified as Gold Status, which highlights our city's commitment to sustainability as well as an attractive place to live and do business. We capture our sustainability goals across five pillars, which I'll highlight just a few accomplishments today against those pillars and then wrap up with a few of those 2024 targets. These pillars are water quality, education, outreach, and wellness, transportation, trees and green space, and resource efficiency. And as I mentioned a moment ago, Jason's been involved with all of them over the years and kind of set a good foundation for us. This past year, in water quality, volunteers continued to monitor our watersheds, collaborating with the Neighborhood Water Watch, with the Chattahoochee River Keeper Waterway Monitoring Program. This program provided early detection of a sewage overflow upstream from us outside of Dunwoody. And due to our detection, the issue was quickly fixed, keeping our water cleaner for wildlife and for Dunwoody citizens to enjoy. And the city staff, we ask for your consideration and direction to financially support the CRK, Chattahoochee River Keeper activities going forward. Sustainability enhances our community engagement and our wellness. Citizens want to be outside and enjoy Dunwoody. Additionally, Mike Jackson with Discover Dunwoody shared how our city's sustainability helps market Dunwoody as a desirable business destination for conferences, and this brings in more investment and creates opportunities for our city. We completed a greenhouse gas emissions inventory assessment, which categorized some actionable improvements for the city. It also informed our April Greenspeak topic, saving money on energy bills and reducing your home's carbon footprint. Held earlier this month, this was our second quarterly Greenspeak this year and intended to raise awareness of opportunity. and intended to raise awareness of opportunities to improve sustainable living in the community. Other recent topics included electric vehicles by an industry expert in last October, as well as stormwater management, which was a very engaging presentation delivered by Carl Thomas in January. With Jay and Richard's leadership, the city added EV charging stations to City Hall and continues to assess City Hall energy efficiency measures as well as trialing transitioning to hybrids for our fleet. And then the Trees and Green Space pillar, we achieved great success quickly selling out of the 50 available trees through the front yard tree planting program. And we'll revisit that here in a, in a moment. And then Dunwoody enhanced recycling awareness with the Household Hazardous Waste and E-Waste Recycling Events, led by Richard's Community Development Department, as well as D-News Communications and collaboration with Jennifer and Kathy in Communications. So as we look ahead into 2024, Dunwoody's sustainability isn't a one-time event. There are many activities that will continue as we assess opportunities to improve. In our Education Outreach and Wellness pillar, we support continued funding for the Household Hazardous Waste and E-Waste Recycling Events and continue the Quarterly Greenspeak Series as well as Monthly D-News Highlights. And our fantastic community achievement in honor of ARC Gold Status also highlights a few opportunities that we have to further improve. And we plan to include those in our plan to Platinum Status by 2026. Now, realize, we achieved 315 points, which is on the top end of the Gold Status. We're only 15 points away from Platinum. And we believe that we can, this is achievable through highlighting some investments the city's already made, such as the alternative fuels in our fleet, as well as the brownfield redevelopment at High Street. And there's also some opportunities for other activities over the next two years. So we recertify in 2026. Our recycling pickup days, you guys can see that there's many blue bins out by homeowner curbs. This is a DeKalb County service that unfortunately is not accessible to multifamily housing residents as those recycling services are provided separately by private companies. We are assessing recycling options for multifamily housing residents and learning how other communities have tackled this problem. In water, in the water quality, quality pillar, we will reevaluate joining the Georgia Department of Community Affairs Water First Community Program in collaboration with DeKalb County, who's also evaluating the program. And in the Trees and Green Space pillar, we plan to expand the front yard tree planting to 80 trees this year, educate on replanting in natives, and assess composting options for the community. And we're considering making practical recommendations for single-family tree ordinance so that we can ensure a long-term tree canopy for Dunwoody. And lastly, we plan to pursue grants to support additional community sustainability enhancements. So we thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on Dunwoody's sustainability plan progress. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And we want to thank you, Michael, for your leadership and the members of the Sustainability Commission for your active work in our community. Much like our recycling events would not happen without y'all, as well as the many opportunities for education. So we appreciate your service to Dunwoody.
Thank you. Our pleasure.
Thank you. All right. Next is Girl Scout troop, is that right? Yeah. 19443, girls and your leaders, if you'll come up here. Make sure you speak into the microphone, please. Come educate us about what's happening and why we're here today.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Yeah, you gotta pull it. Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you, guys, for having us here tonight. I am the troop leader of troop 19443. Very honored to be in that position with these, these fifth graders. And this year, they earned the Bronze Award. So that is the first of the high awards in Girl Scouts. So there's bronze, silver, and gold. And so they're on that, that journey together. With that, they have to complete a journey set of badges. They commit to 20 hours to this effort each. And then they have to implement their Bronze Award project. So I'm going to have some of the girls come up and share what that project was and the phases of it. And you can also see they've got some pictures of the final products here for you to see.
Okay.
Hello, my name.
Yeah, pull it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Violet. The first part of our project started with all of us brainstorming ideas on a project to help Dunwoody. We all loved the idea of making a bird sanctuary from upcycling materials.
Hi, my name is Sophia, and I'm going to share the first steps we did for making our project. Next, we made prototypes from the items we gathered at home, such as eat snack containers, piping, and wood planks. It was fun working in a wood shop. We finished building, assembling, and painting after agreeing on our design.
Hello, my name is Kate Kramer. I made I made a presentation from the idea and pieces we made. This was to get an approval on a location for our sanctuary. We made ideas that birds are important as they are pollinators and parts of the food chain. The proposal was accepted from the Vermax Women's.
My name is Eve. Lastly, we spread the word. We are posting a sign that the Vermat Club got an article published and are sharing with you. Thank you for listening and supporting Girl Scouts.
Thank you very much. Will y'all turn around so the audience can see your birdhouses and how wonderful they are? Yay. Pictures, all of us. Yeah, just. As you walk out, thank you, girls. Very nice addition to our community. All right. You are up, Jonathan. You might want to introduce yourself since you're new to many residents here.
Be glad to.
Okay. Oh, we're not seeing anything on our end?
I think I've got it set up.
There we go. Something's happening. There you go.
Showing full screen for y'all real quick. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Last couple of presentations, going to be tough to follow, I think. But very excited to come and talk to you and everybody about safety tonight. I am Jonathan DeJoy. I am the Safe Streets Program Manager for the City of Dunwoody. And this marks about the first year, the end of the first year of this new program. And of my being a part of this program, it was about a year ago that I came and introduced myself before you all. And very excited to, to talk about where we've been this year and where we're going on this program. And now I wish I had brought my, my three little kids with me too. That would have been and that they could talk to you about, about biking and stuff too. But and speaking of biking, I was really excited to see I wasn't the only one who rode my bike here today. Got a lot of other, had lots of other bike riders here. So yay, biking to City Hall. So overall, program goals are driving progress toward our city's goals of reducing and eliminating serious injury and fatality crashes on our city's roadways. This was the goal behind the Road Safety Action Plan that we completed last year. It's the reason I'm here. And so what I'm doing is I'm collaborating across the different city departments to really drive that progress and really try to make, make progress on the goal of everybody making it safe, making it home safe at night here in Dunwoody. So one of our big initiatives last year, probably our biggest initiative last year, was the completion of the Dunwoody Road Safety Action Plan. That started right about the time that I started last year, significant public and stakeholder engagement throughout that process. And a lot of data crunching and looking at existing crash data, existing patterns across the city and making data-driven recommendations. You all are familiar with that plan as it was presented and adopted last November. So not going to go into a ton of detail there, but now we're really in implementation mode on that now. But a few other things that were going on last year during, during the plan development, really going on in tandem with that. We did get to also complete a few different sort of short timeframe projects in tandem with that. So one of them was a pilot project that we did in front of Dunwoody Elementary School in response to concerns about safety at the crosswalk there at Lakeland Woods Court. And this was a project where it did successfully address some issues of speeding and pedestrian crossing distance and visibility. During, at the end of the pilot period, we did end up discontinuing the project, just where there were some other complicating factors with the location. But we do have some other follow-up actions that we're still taking at that location to address safety that are in the pipeline right now. Some other kind of quick timeframe projects, there was a project that we got to complete last year. This was completed by the Public Works Department and I collaborated with, with them on the design and the location for this project. It was a project that took a stretch of Vanderland Drive. There was a key walk-to-school route for kids walking to school from the neighborhoods along Vanderland Drive, going to Van Berlin Elementary, as well as Dunwoody High School, and were able to fill in a gap of sidewalk there that was able to separate pedestrians, separate the kids walking to school from drop-off traffic, turnarounds, and parking that area. And then another third project that we were able to complete on a quick timescale last year, kind of in tandem with the Road Safety Action Plan. This was one in coordination with the Parks and Recreation. It was completed by Parks and Recreation, identified by a citizen who noticed traffic patterns in the parking lot during really busy times of parents dropping off, turning around. People, kids go into soccer practice in the park and just identified an opportunity to improve safety there by improving pedestrian visibility, managing speeds. So this was one where I got together with Public Works Department and Parks Department, and we figured out a solution that Parks Department was able to implement to put in some speed humps, put in a formalized crosswalk, and hatch out part of a parking space to improve pedestrian visibility and make a brand-new connection to the path through Brook Run Park there and add the signage and everything just to really bring the pedestrians to be more visible in that area of Brook Run Park. So some things that have been going on since the Road Safety Action Plan adoption last fall, we've established a Road Safety Committee. This is one of the action items from the Road Safety Action Plan. I'll go into a little bit more detail on what the Road Safety Committee does on a future slide. We did, we're chipping away at some of the different recommendations from the plan. One actually follow-up from the Dunwoody Elementary School, School Zone Crosswalk that I mentioned earlier was completing an engineering study to expand that school zone, that school speed zone a little bit. Right now, the, the school zone starts almost right as you're arriving at the crosswalk, if you're driving down Womack Drive. So we are submitting that to GDOT for approval so that we can actually take some action to move that school zone and give drivers a little bit more time to respond as they're driving into that school zone. Collaborated with Public Works on developing a process and a mechanism for citizens to continue submitting road safety concerns and ideas to the city. We got to do this formally through the Road Safety Action Plan process, where we had a survey and a mapping exercise, where citizens actually sent a lot of really great feedback on areas where they had concerns, areas where they saw near misses or just had ideas for ways to improve safety, even small things around the city. Because the residents are really some of the best eyes and ears on the ground for where some of those opportunities are. But we wanted to continue that. So we developed a way through the city's existing C Click Fix account to set up a way for, for people to be able to report, report concerns or ideas. And that's live now. So there's a road safety category on C Click Fix that, that residents and anybody can report things to. I've been in ongoing coordination with the City of Dorville and with GDOT for opportunities on the state route 141 Peachtree Boulevard Access Road, improving pedestrian conditions there. The City of Dorville is interested in working on the Dorville side. And I've been working with them on how we can kind of coordinate with GDOT together and, and also looking at the, GDOT is actually also very interested in building some pedestrian improvements and being a partner for making improvements in that corridor as well. So and then also working with the Road Safety Committee to develop ongoing development of a prioritized list of projects that hit lots of these different goals of the Road Safety Action Plan. So I'll get into more on that in a minute. So the Road Safety Committee, this is an interdisciplinary working group of made up of staff from police, Public Works, Community Development, including myself. And we do a few different things. One is any time that there is a fatal or severe injury crash that is reported to us by the Dunwoody Police Department, after the police have completed their investigation, we'll actually go out to, to the location later and look at what some of the contributing factors could have potentially been, identify if there are any short or long-term actions that the city can potentially pursue to try and prevent something like that from happening in the future. We held our first review on February 20th this year and have already gotten some, some work orders for some really low-cost, quick-response things that we can do in response to that particular crash. And thankfully, we have not had any more fatal or severe injury crashes reported to us since then. I hope that we do not have to conduct another one of these reviews soon, but it's kind of held on an ad hoc basis. Another thing that this working group does is implementing, guiding the implementation of the Road Safety Action Plan and those, those priorities from the plan. So we have developed a short-term list of some of the projects that we are planning to pursue with our city short-term funds. I think I also mentioned, you know, there are also a lot of other, a lot of other kind of projects that are longer term or require more coordination, whether that's with GDOT or neighboring jurisdictions, et cetera. So really keeping, keeping a lot of those going simultaneously. And so one of those bigger initiatives is an application for a Safe Streets and Roads for All. That's SS4A implementation grant. So one of the exciting, exciting news about our Road Safety Action Plan is that it has teed us up to be eligible for federal funds for this implementation grant to build, build safety improvements in Dunwoody. We got an official letter from USDOT saying that our, our Road Safety Action Plan was eligible. And not only that, but scored extra points for going above and beyond and really hitting all their emphasis areas for what they want to see in an action plan. So very excited about that. We are planning to pursue a grant to construct a project along North Peachtree Road between I-285 and Tilly Mill Road. I'll show a, a location map in just a minute. But really excited about this project. We really think it will address a lot of the city's core goals, both for safety and for multimodal connectivity through here. We want the project to look at the whole, the corridor as a whole, looking at opportunities to, for safe pedestrian crossings, safety for all users, drivers, pedestrians, people riding bikes. Look at intersections and look at each intersection individually and, and what are some of the best opportunities of those intersections? And then also to construct the recommended path or multimodal facility recommended in the bicycle or, sorry, the Trailmaster Plan, the Dunwoody Trailmaster Plan as a part of that process as well. So really looking at this. as a part of that process as well. So really looking at this corridor as a whole. Um, and really a great opportunity to connect Chestnut Elementary School, Peachtree Middle School, Brook Run Park and the neighborhoods and apartment complexes that are along that corridor. So this is uh the location map. The red is the proposed project area approximately, um and just highlighting some of the destinations that connects. Um, including some of our uh, one of our census tracts in the city that was that's identified by USDOT as a disadvantaged community census tract. So uh really a good um equity opportunity here as well. So in addition to the Safe Streets for All Implementation Grant, uh some things that are coming up next uh are continuing to implement some of these short-term opportunities. Another one that I think will uh just be likely to hit first in terms of timeline is looking at a pilot project at Nandina Lane and Mount Vernon Road, uh an intersection with a lot of uh just sight distance and pedestrian safety concerns um that was identified in the Road Safety Action Plan as well as heard from uh heard from citizens and experienced it myself. Um, so planning to address that this summer and to to do a pilot project cheaply or efficiently, I guess, through a uh in tandem with our repaving contract uh that is anticipated for this summer. So uh some other things that are going on right now are conducting speed studies in a few key locations where uh the context of the road, the amount of pedestrian bicycle activity may not uh be in harmony with the speed limit. And so looking at places to work with state requirements to adjust speed limits on some key uh key corridors. And also continuing, I thi- this is another uh another process that the Road Safety Committee has started is uh another Road Safety Action Plan strategy, doing these high injury network corridor walks. So the high injury network is this um uh certain list of corridors around the city that account for nine percent of the city's road miles, but eighty-four percent of the serious injury and fatality crashes in the city. I forgot to mention North Peachtree Road is one of those. So that's another reason why that was identified as a Safe Streets for All project candidate. Um, but one of our goals is to do corridor walks. Do several of these each year along uh on foot, you know, at ground level, looking at quick and and longer term potentially opportunities along some of these high injury network corridors. So we got to do our first one uh earlier this month and will continue those. And so uh here is a list of some of the projects that we are looking at for uh potentially kind of short midterm projects that uh that we would like to be able to pursue within the next one to two years. Uh, some of these timeline may uh may be dependent a little bit on other uh coordination with other stakeholders, but uh we've got several uh crosswalk enhancements that we're planning around the city. Uh, we have a few other uh roadspace reallocation and and a few other things around the city that we are looking at. Um, and this is just kind of one list. We've also got, this isn't counting the Safe Streets for All application over further on the east side. Uh, this doesn't have the uh Nandina and some of the other, there's too much going on really to put in in one map and honestly in one presentation, but just wanted to give y'all some of the highlights here as we're trying to really um hit, keep some of the long-term things moving in the background while also advancing some of these short-term opportunities to uh to really try to be efficient and try to move the needle here on safety in Dunwoody. And that is concludes my presentation.
Thank you. It's a good presentation. Would anybody like to ask questions? John?
Thank you, Jonathan, for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. You mentioned the Doraville uh segment uh along Peachtree Industrial. Basically, there's missing sidewalks throughout the Doraville section. We've done both our share. Um, I talked to Councilman Warren Simmons of Doraville, and I believe uh Representative Johnson has something moving forward on that. Mr. Smith, I see you in the background there, I guess. I want to make sure that that's a high priority. It has been for many years, but those sidewalks serve hundreds, if not thousands, of Dunwoody residents along the Peachtree Industrial, Winter's Chapel area. And that has worn down into a muddy path, and I think that is the highest priority of any sidewalk in the city of Dunwoody. It's been like that for years. I think it's a priority for us. It's a priority for our residents. And I'd like us to actually, if we could follow up with Representative Johnson, follow up with Doraville. It's an important project, and I think it needs our attention. Second, um your list, Jonathan, of uh priority items has something on Shambly Dunwoody and Kings Down. Michael, on item 11 later today, I'm going to be pulling that or asking for that to be looked at at Kings Down. Why is there not a beacon? Why is there not, what's what's planned at Kings Down and Shambly Dunwoody? Because Jonathan, your 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 update was kind of questionable. I wasn't sure what you were trying to say there.
Yes, we're planning to relocate the crosswalk and shorten the crossing and add a uh flashing, one of the rapid flashing beacons.
Okay, so on number 11, it doesn't show the rapid flashing beacon um for Kings Down. It was a much lower price point, and I'm wondering why.
Uh, you want me to cover that now or?
Well, again, you can be prepared for it later. I guess I'm just, that's what I'm going to be asking for in number 11, since both you and Jonathan are talking about that intersection. I figured I'd raise it when it first came up.
Okay, uh, yeah, I can answer it now. The, so the ones, the top two on that list, the pedestrian hybrid beacon beacons, that's like the full red light over the roadway.
That's the Hawk system, right?
Yes, and the one, the other ones on the list, like at Kings Down, is the the flashing light like that's out at Chestnut now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, thank you. I think that's important. We don't have that listed. We don't have that amenity now, and I think it's important to add. So thank you. I just wanted clarification on that. And finally, Jonathan, you were talking about the project on North Peachtree Road. Have we done any surveys in the sense of uh school children walking up and down North Peachtree? What side of the road do they mostly walk on?
I do not know the answer to that right now, but um that will be an important part of the project development, you know, the the public involvement. There will be if we are able to move forward with that project, there will be a large amount of public involvement as the project develops. I have already been in communication with the parent, uh, let's see, the Principal Advisory Council of Chestnut Elementary, and uh the parents are actually at, they're planning to present uh some of their findings, some of their concerns and and ideas to the city staff. Um, in the next few weeks, we're working on setting up a date to talk with them, so have been in communication with the principals and the the parent organizations along the corridor, but uh that that will be an important part of the project.
Right. Thank you for that communication with Chestnut. I too have talked to Chestnut, but I haven't gotten into details that they're going to be talking to you or us about.
Right.
I was talking about something a little bit different, but thank you for the communication. When it comes to the work on North Peachtree, the underserved community identified by the Department of Transportation is actually in the apartment complex on the east side, and that's probably where hundreds of children's wa- children walk. So I just want to make sure that we look at it from uh various perspectives and that we, if we are applying for a grant, that we are serving the underserved community that we're looking to apply the grant money to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, do you have anything, Joe? No, no, just go, please.
Uh, first of all, thank you, Jonathan, so much. I I have a sidebar conversate note is, do you know of any other city in the region that has a position like yours?
I I'm not aware of one other than the City of Atlanta's Vision Zero.
Right. So so I want to just level set. Thank you, and I thank the council for budgeting this staff position. Thank you for being where you are. Thank you for, you know, coming from zero a year ago, right? So it's it's now in staff and it's with budget and you're you're formalizing. We have plans and we have we have directions. So I appreciate that so so much. Um, the PIB, you know, um, are are we going to put a guardrail in between the sidewalk and motor vehicle traffic? If you notice up above, I don't know which jurisdiction is, but if you go further along, there's the sidewalk and then the guardrail is outs, you know what I mean? There's
The guardrail is
Then there's the sidewalk, and then the guardrail is after the pedestrians instead. So I hope we're protecting pedestrians if there's future designs, you know what I mean? Yeah. Um, in in insofar as your position and and your relationship and and role of activities. So I know there's these, the current situation and and the build-out, but I'm, what about looking at uh other concept designs we have sitting out there for other transportation projects? Are are you providing feedback as well? Things that haven't begun construction yet uh early on in the cycle? Um, are, do you get a chance to review those? Are you part of that process? Are are you, do you look at those th- those things that are on the books that are still in concept or pre-construction?
I am. Yes, that that was, like I said, there's a little, there's too much that I've been working on to put in one presentation, but that is, the staff uh regularly use me as a resource to review all sorts of different plans uh for, you know, the safety and the bicycle and pedestrian uh background that I bring.
Would that include, I mean, this is kind of late in the game, but we're we're going to be breaking ground hopefully pretty soon with the Tilly Mill, Mount Vernon intersection. Did you have any?
I believe I've I've looked at a lot. Was that one of the ones I looked at?
Maybe.
I, I don't remember. I've I've looked at a lot. Uh, I I I sure Dunwoody bicycle track is one that I've been uh been very involved in recently.
Saturday night, I was on Twitter. I follow Charles Mahone or Charles Marone, runner from Strong Strong Towns, and he's throughout this Vision Zero is BS. Vision Zero at the city, they don't work. It's a bunch of, and I went in there and I said, sorry, I don't believe you. And I started talking about a little bit what we're doing, and I'm charm chiming, chime. I'm trying to, you know, say, by the way, don't generalize every city in the United States. So thank you for that. Um, so there's plans. What about policies? Do we have, now, we're not too, we're not big enough city to have our own uh transportation design book. Right? But um, if I go back a couple of years ago, you know, we we approved an a a a senior living multifamily rental across kitty corner from across from the mall on Ashford Dunwoody. And the original design was a uh D cell lane. You had you had the vehicle lane, bike lane, then a D cell lane. And that passed the Planning Commission and was presented to council. And then I said, well, let's move that out there because I don't see any like twelve-year-old person, a daughter gonna, a child gonna be on on a bike in the middle of two, in between more vehicle lanes. Uh, do do we have systemically changed that going forward? Or is it still relying on an individual that's a member of the city council or planning commission to see that and ask for that to be changed?
Um, I I'm involved in uh working on identifying some areas where we may be able to uh look at process changes, I guess. I I think that, like you mentioned, it's not, the the city of Dunwoody is not such a large department that it has its own full design manual. Uh, I don't know if any city our size does, but uh, but no, that that's something, that's initiative that I'm working on. I actually have a uh memo that I'm putting together of, it's have a draft that I've kind of put on on hold while we're getting through the Safe Streets for All application, but where I I am um making some recommendations uh along those lines about things where we could look at these here, here, and here for for new designs, for new developments, things that developers would build, also public infrastructure. So I if I understand what you're saying, I think we we are, I am working on some recommendations along those lines, but I'm not uh a a policy writer, I guess.
Sure, sure. Yeah, but uh from a process perspective, though, going forward, would you see yourself as part of being in the loop? If there's a new developer that shows up that wants to do some roadway or street steep improvements, would you be part of that staff evaluation process before it even gets to, say, Planning Commission?
I guess that would be uh up to my supervisor, but I would
I'm seeing a nod.
I think that's a yes. I would expect so.
Gregory, thank thanks, thanks. Um, like I I know there's a several several other things about, you know, we've got long D cell lanes that go to nowhere, but they're in a plan to be a a adopted and changed, you know, five years from now. Um, just, yeah, there's a lot of little miscellaneous things. I sent you the email. I copied a few other council members on as well. So uh I don't think I'm asking for an ad- address the council of all those things today. But it's bollards, it's additional paint, it's it's putting a little curb barrier, it's putting little turtle bumps. Um um, it's those kind of things. It's it's making the crossing raised instead of lowering on a on a multi-use trail to say that the trail user has priority. Um, leading pedestrian interval signals they just did in in Atlanta bulbing out or daylight's intersection. So there's just this whole myth, you know, I follow on Twitter this whole other, these whole people, and I say, well, these speed tables all sorts of things. So, you know, stopping paint bars at every intersection, all those things I just anyway, the list goes on. There's a a lot of little low-hanging fruit that could be just paint. And it's 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 a little bit of staff work of seeing some things, putting stop bars at every stop sign in the city, you know, things like that. So I I sent you the email, so I don't need to address every one of them, but if you have any thoughts or comments, just those super, super low-hanging things that don't require install, you know, paving or putting in new curb and gutter.
And I love that you see all the things that I see. You 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 look, you you move through the city and you can't help but see, oh, there's an opportunity there. There's an opportunity there because that's how I that's how I live my life, you know, everywhere that I go as a as an engineer and someone in this field. Um and so, yes, there there are a lot of opportunities. I'm I'm really excited about them too. We're we're working on uh just trying to address them in order of priority from the Road Safety Action Plan, uh trying to simultaneously get get some things in the hopper for the longer term while also addressing some of those inter, you know, intermediate things and and trying to be smart with um with how we use the resources for things that will be addressed in the future versus, you're right, maybe there are some of those opportunities where, yes, there's a future project, but uh, there's a safety justification for doing this right now. Um, so uh, so the answer is I mean, yes, I'm I'm, we're we're working on those kinds of things as well at at uh trying to work in order of priority from our Road Safety Action Plan.
All right.
Stacy.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Um, just a few quick things. I I know I know somebody in our public comments said that public safeties are number one priority, and this is a vast big element of public safety, and I couldn't keep track of how many times you words use the word safety in your presentation. So this is all about public safety. Um I always like to know timing of things, when it's going to be done. What is the timing of the SS4A grant? I mean, I know we're in the process of applying.
Yes.
When do we find out? And then when, like, ki- kind of give me a little bit of a timeline as much as you would know.
Yes, I failed to mention, so the deadline for that is May 16th, so we'll be submitting by May 16th. And uh I don't know that they've given an exact date that they would announce by. I would expect it probably late summer or early fall uh when we would hear that announcement, but I I do not know the mind of the USDOT and exactly when that will happen, but um
Hopefully, we'll still be alive.
Right. And and then, you know, just seeing how these grants have gone historically with other cities. I mean, it it may take, uh, because it's a federal grant, it may take close to a year even to get between the announcement, getting the grant agreement and getting things underway just to set expectations.
And then I know you and I sit out there at the corner of Nandina and Mount Vernon, um, looking at that intersection. Um and you, the pilot project is coming. Can you kind of tell us what it's going to look like? I'm just curious because I mean, we saw people actually gaining speed to run that stop.
Right, right. Now, you and I both watched people just like hit the gas as they went through the stop sign there. Um, now, we're uh so timeline, looking at this summer, um, we are looking at, we we've kind of uh workshopped a few different possible alternatives. Um, you know, with the goal of increasing pedestrian visibility and reducing people's speeds as they're going, drivers as they're making that right turn and try to help them actually look where they're going and look right and not just look left. Um, one alternative that we are looking at right now is um, so right now it's a right-in, right-out intersection where you can turn right into Nandina, you can turn right out of Nandina, but you can't turn left into Nandina or left out of Nandina. We're looking at basically eliminating that right into Nandina. And uh, so so you can still, it's still a two-way street further down where there's access to properties and things like that. But uh, and what that would allow us to do would be to take uh, right now, the alignment is is skewed, you know, so it's uh, the the right turn, you're kind of craning your neck to the left, looking behind you. You don't necessarily see a pedestrian coming from your right in front of you. The the alignment kind of encourages high-speed right turns just by being kind of that obtuse angle. So uh, we're looking at using the space that we could recover by closing that. Uh, I guess that would be like a westbound right, uh, the the right turn from Mount Vernon onto Nandina. And uh, using that space to be able able to kind of realign the turn that most people are making, the the vast majority of drivers on that road. I was standing out there with um Community Development and Public Works staff just the other day, looking at that intersection. And, you know, the, it was probably, I don't know, you know, almost fifty cars turning right to one, you know, turning right into it or something like that. So uh, but using that space to be able to change the angle just a little bit. Uh, you know, there would be a longer-term option of changing the angle by buying some right-of-way and moving utilities and shifting the whole road over to change the angle. That would be kind of the longer-term expensive or, you know, higher cost way to do that. Um, but we're looking at kind of buying some extra space by closing that uh that northbound direction just at the intersection to be able to uh change the angle and also narrow that crossing distance.
Thank you. Anybody? Tom, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Jonathan, for the presentation and uh thank you for all you've done over the past year. I'll kind of a build off of uh what Stacy said, you know, we talk about public safety. Too often people think about what we do after there's an incident, but just as important, if not more important, a public safety or the proactive measures we can take to prevent that incident from happening in the first place. And there are a lot of things we can do through proper engineering, investments in infrastructure, that we we can make the community safer and prevent those things from happening in the first place. So uh, this is an important uh initiative. The community safer and prevent those things from happening in the first place. So, uh, this, this is an important, uh, initiative and I appreciate all you're doing. Um, the only other thing I'll add is I'm, I eagerly anticipate seeing, uh, the North Peachtree, uh, corridor. Um, I know that. Uh, I had a number of residents personally reach out to me asking for improvements in that area. Majority of those from, uh, from parents whose children walk to school. Uh, a number of multifamily and also single family neighborhoods along that corridor. A lot of children have walked to school. Uh, you know, not as safe as it should be right now. So I look forward to that. Uh, and then, and then you add in the factor that it's, there's three churches and our flagship park along, and, and it's a gateway into the city. So. Uh, it's, it's really a corridor that should be addressed. I'm happy that's on the list and a priority. I know it was addressed, um. Listed as a priority of the citizens' capital committee last year. Uh, so I'm glad that that is there and I. Very much looking forward to, uh, what that plan shows us. So thank, thank you.
So I want to, um, thank you, Jonathan, for this report. Um, your position exists obviously because we supported it, but because. Really the number one complaint we got. Over the years from our residents was pedestrian safety in terms of getting around. I mean, nobody, they complain about traffic, but quite frankly. Everyone's kind of, you live in a place where people want to live. You live in the place that's in the middle of everywhere. We, we do a lot of work to make traffic better already. But people want to be able to walk from their na- one neighborhood to another. I mean, they don't even have to be able to walk. To the grocery store necessarily for walking to be important for them. And your position exists. We have not done such a study here, but in Sandy Springs, a few years ago, pre-pandemic. They did a study that showed that traffic is reduced 50% in Sandy Springs when school is out of session. Imagine if we could get kids out of single rider cars. And onto school buses, which is out of our control because we don't get to control the school bus schedule. I've tried, believe me, I've asked multiple times for them to shake things up a little bit. Uh, and not have the elementary school buses leave so early in the morning. But also for the great many families who live walking distance to schools, but they won't walk because they don't think it's safe. So these changes, even if you're a person who never walks. And has no need for sidewalks or you're never going to cross a busy street. Every, it's a victory for everyone when we have fewer people in cars. The North Peachtree corridor is home to our largest apartment complex. It has 900 units. I don't know the current count. But at one point a few years ago, there were more than a hundred children at the elementary school alone. But not only that, and many people might not be aware that the neigh- the really large neighborhood across the street, Dunwoody North. Does not receive, even though the back of Dunwoody North is several miles from Chestnut Elementary School, they don't receive bus transportation because the state defines. Their reimbursement is based on where the front of the neighborhood is. Little ridiculous. But, and then you have all the kids, that doesn't even count the kids walking to the middle school. Um, or the daily act walks to Brookfront, Brook Run Park. It is. Chestnut is maybe a generously a half mile from the interstate, if that, and Peachtree is right next door. Wouldn't be where I'd put a school today, but they're there and beloved in the community. Um, people come off two eighty-five. My Nandina story is, is that I was standing there with police officers once. And people, we could, we could, we could make tons of money if we just ticketed every person who ran that stop sign all day long. They, with police officers in uniform, by the way. But this position exists because for our community, they've defined, uh, pedestrian safety, cyclist safety as a priority. And we, and we appreciate, and to be clear, we tried something at Dunwoody Elementary School, a, a pop-up project, and it didn't work. And we abandoned it. And that's really good policy. You know, that's really good. Cause imagine if we had built it. And then it had failed, all the money and aggravation. Um, also Dunwoody Christian School is moving. To First Baptist Church, which is also off of North Peachtree Road. Um, we might get our school camera that way, by the way, our speed zone camera. Working on it with that school because maybe they'll become part of a school zone. Um, just, just thinking creatively. Um. Right. Right, exactly. So I think that, um. I think that, uh, the work you're doing is important. Um, when we do, Michael, I wrote a note. But when we do the shambly Dunwoody thing, can we talk about where we put it at because of the neighbor and the back, back, back? Okay. All right. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate all of your support and all the staff support.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Good luck on the grant. Hi Patty. Uh, hi. All right, consent agenda. Any comments or questions? Uh, John, go ahead.
I'd like to pull, uh, items number seven and nine.
Seven and nine, okay. They will become. We actually don't. I was just reading the rules on consent agenda. And all it takes is one council person to move it, uh, because it consent agenda, the vote has to be unanimous. So, um, seven and nine become. Nine and 10. Is that going to work for you, Sharon? So they become, they become, right, they become the first two items under business. All right. Um. I just want to make a point. It's your, it's good, it's good to pull things. We do, we all have done that before, but these items. Have been discussed pretty extensively two weeks ago. We don't, or three weeks ago, whenever our last meeting was, just for the public's information. Items don't end up on consent. There was probably a time in Dunwoody. Where things ended up on consent without public discussion, but when I became mayor. We started an item where not unless it's like a, an emergency vote. Everything has to be a discussion item first. So at our meeting three weeks ago, we discussed. Almost everything on this agenda. To be transparent, we talked about. The tough books, uh. That contract a while ago, that wasn't approved and that comes from Splos. That was approved a while ago. I mean, we talked about it a while ago. We're approving it tonight. Um, but everything else, uh, was on either the agenda. Three weeks ago or previously, because that's a policy change I made that we don't, uh, have business items again, unless it's an emergency or consent items. That were not discussed. Okay. With that, this is a consent agenda. It needs a motion.
To approve the consent agenda as amended?
Move by Tom.
Second.
Second by Rob. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So now Michelle, you are up, uh, but Sharon has to read it, I guess. Sorry. Okay. We're probably got ahead of Sharon. Did you hear? Okay, I can't see the post is continually in my way. No, you're fine. No, but I think Sharon still has to read it. So.
Were you going to do number six?
Yeah.
The contract was Practical Design Partners LLC for Winter Chapel Path Base Two Design.
Yes.
Uh, I make a motion to approve this item.
So moved.
Second.
Second by. Tom. Uh, questions or comments? Discussion is appropriate now, John.
Yeah, Michelle, I have a question regarding the RFP, uh, the design. Is that for 12 feet wide? Is there any options to go down to, let's say eight feet?
Um, it is shown as 12 feet. Um, we will go through the concept report. Analysis and we can look at other options at that point, but it has been identified as a 12 foot multiple.
Yeah, I was reading the RFP. I didn't see any options. I just saw 12 feet. I didn't see any other options available. So I wanted.
I believe that's because it's how it's been identified in our, um, Trail Master Plan.
Got it. And that's in front of single family homes. So that's all I need to know. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No.
I do for Michael. So. I'm directionally challenged, but the first phase of this trail would be to the east north. Really? That road runs north, south? Okay. To the north of this trail. And it runs in front of some single family homes. Have we, did we have complaints from those homeowners through this process?
I'm not aware of any complaints.
Councilman Lambert, did you hear from any of those?
I didn't get any complaints.
John, did you hear from those, any of those?
I'm confused. The first section, the.
It does.
The trail is behind houses, something from.
No, I thought the same thing until I went over there. It runs in front of at least.
A few, there is a few, yeah.
Five. Yeah, somebody thought it was a parking lot. Um, five, I think it was three to five houses. So I just wanted to clarify. I think sometimes. We have to be careful not to. The royal, we have to be careful not to think a complaint from. One party generalizes across, across the city. I mean, I'm just as guilty as everybody.
I just like to make comment too, just, uh, for the record, I, I believe. There's only, uh, phase two would only go through two front yards and one side yard. The overwhelming majority of this project is actually alongside a cemetery. Um, I don't think those residents will be complaining, um, and, uh, and a commercial area. And this, this, I, I've, I've received several emails. Requesting the city move forward with this. I haven't received any concern emails on this particular project personally. I don't know. I can't speak for others. Um, and the reason for the importance is to continue what we started and to get, connect those neighborhoods, Mayfair, Fountain Blue, Lockridge Forest. Down to the commercial area at Winter Chapel and Peeler. There's a lot of people that want that connection. Um. It doesn't currently exist. So this is finishing what we've started.
Right. We don't need a path to nowhere either. I called a question, I called a question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Uh, Sharon, did you get that? Thank you. That passes six to one. So that was seven. So Richard, uh, the quarter became, no, that was nine. So the next one becomes 10. Richard.
You have to read it in.
Oh, I can read it. Do you want me to? Yeah, just the caption was first quarter 2024 budget amendment.
Correct. Yes. So. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will very quickly, uh, summarize this, uh, quarterly budget amendment. So in historical, we've done a mid-year budget amendment and then a year-end budget amendment. However, as, uh, one of the feedback we got from the council retreat was more frequent budget amendments as they come up. So. We are going to aim to do quarterly budget amendments as, uh, as, uh, as they are needed. So this first quarter budget amendment is aligning, uh, 2024 budgeted revenue with 2023. Uh, unaudited actual expenditures and historical trends as well. So in the general fund, we're adding almost $2.6 million in revenue. We're going to use 280,000 of that to fund the pay raise that takes effect May 30th. And the remaining amount is going to be used to decrease the use of fund balance within the budget. The original budget that was adopted in 2024 had a three u- $3 million use of fund balance within the general fund. This will now. Uh, narrow down the use of fund balance to about $700,000. So, uh, we started the year, or I should say, uh, we ended 2023 at roughly 10 months reserve. Um, with the budget that was adopted, it was going to be about an eight month reserve, but with this amendment here. It'll be about a nine and a half month reserve, uh, assuming budget equals revenues or budgeted and actuals come in similar at the end of the year. So. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, no questions. I really just wanted to hear more about the fund balance, the fact of where we were and where we're going. And what's happening. So I just wanted that update. So the fund balance that we're. Planning on using is no longer the three million and it's down after the raises to the 734,000. Thank you for telling me.
I'd like to take a moment to clarify a few things because I do think. Government finances can be really confusing and I think municipal government finances can be really confusing. And I sometimes think, no offense Hayden, that headlines, if people don't read the articles, sometimes the headlines, which you probably don't write. Are, um. And can tell a story that's not totally accurate. For the public's knowledge, our charter requires a four month, uh. Reserve fund, which means that we have to have in the bank at all times, four months of reserves.
Correct.
Given the uncertainty created by the pandemic. Personally, I'm one vote, I'm more comfortable with the six month. Reserves as we figure out what happens now, now. So we have six months of reserve. We have nine and a half months of reserve, which equals three and a half months above the reserves. Today, we have $8 million in the bank, eight million. Above and beyond the $6 million in reserve, eight million.
Six months.
Yeah, what I said something wrong. Above and beyond the six months in reserve. We have $8 million. We are incredibly careful and I. Myself am disappointed that some of the language we use that's relevant to government accounting has been abused in public discussion. Um. One of the things we do that we are looking at changing because it causes so much confusion is, is we budget revenues. More conservatively than we budget expenses. But in both categories, we spent, we raised more money. Or we take in more money than we spent, we take in more money than we project. And we spend less money than we budget. We're going to do these budget adjustments more often. We're going to budget, the budget that I present the summer may look differently. But to be clear, and you can answer, or Chief Carlson can answer, have we denied the police department any resources that they asked for?
No.
Right. The challenge, and I say this so frequently. That everyone probably gets tired of hearing it. The challenge in public safety hiring, whether it's police. Or fire or EMS is that young adults have far more choices. For careers than they did, say, 20 years ago. And I just came back from a meeting. With mayors across the state and I had presumed, because in a small town, you kind of know everybody, that it might be easier. In a small town, but it is not. I don't know any mayor. That's fo- in, in my circles, it's really fully staffed. It's just tough out there. And, um, you know, we work on putting, and also. There are police officers, there are people who want to be police officers who do not meet our standards. Who apply on a regular basis and we turn them away. We would like to be fully staffed. But we will not lower our standards. I can give you tons of examples from across the country of, really right next door in Doraville. Um, of what can happen if you lower your standards. So we have, you know, public safety is our number one priority. But we owe it to our community and to our officers that are currently here to make sure that we don't lower our standards. And, and that would lead to bad results. So financially, there's a narrative. People can have opinions on how we spend money, or they can have opinions on how we build a budget. But the facts are that we have $8 million in the bank today, above and beyond a six month reserves. We have. Nearly 10 months of reserves today. Now, can I tell you for sure what's going to happen with the property tax digest? Oh, and this $8 million is in a city where the average city taxes. For a homeowner are around $400 if you've owned your house, say for the last 10 or 12 years since the recession. So, and even, even with the people that are new, the average property taxes are pretty low for city taxes. So I just want to be clear, because I think there's a lot of confusion based on some of the language we've used the last few years. But, um, we have. We're not out of money. Not even close. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. I just want to kind of build on two points there as well. Um, because. Richard, I know I've asked you this question probably a dozen times over the past year, but the word deficit was brought up. And I just want to clarify for people that may have not been. Paying attention in prior meetings, but heard that today I might be concerned. Uh, and again, I'll only ask if your time that you've been with the city. But in your time, has the city ever ended the year with a budget deficit?
The time that I've been here, that, no, the city has not.
In fact, we ended with over a million dollars in surplus last year.
Twenty twenty-three, we will add to fund balance, correct.
Oh, okay. And, um, I also just want to make out another point because, uh, the point, uh, or. Uh, there was a point made in public comments about, um. Perhaps building sidewalks is taking away from the police department. The mayor's already emphasized that we've never denied the police department anything they've asked for. Uh, but it's also important to know with government finance that not all money is created equally. Um, and the fact of the matter is. That our, our sidewalks. And trails and, and things of that nature are primarily funded either through grants or through Splos. By law, we cannot use Splos money for operations. We cannot hire additional police officers with Splos funds. We cannot do that. It is, is restricted by law. Now, a portion of Splos does go to police. It goes, but, but. Now, a portion of SPOLOST does go to police. It goes, but but SPOLOST is completely for capital investments. So we do fund police cars, equipment, other capital needs of the police department through SPOLOST and a certain, that's again, a percentage determined by law. It's in ordinance, it's in our city ordinance uh adopted by the council. Um but. Uh the other portion uh must go to. To our public works. We cannot put that into into hiring more police officers.
So voters approve or within the referendum, it has laid out how much we can spend within certain categories and that's obviously on the referendum that the voters approve. And dictates how much we can spend, yes.
So and again, I just want to emphasize because building a sidewalk doesn't mean. We do not prioritize police. We're using the 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 funds that we have. Available. For the categories they're allocated to. Thank you.
And and I just want to correct something I said. Since I have been mayor, we have not denied police anything. The previous administration wasn't as gung ho to fund things. So there's that. All right, with that, oh, go ahead, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, Richard, I just also want to also kind of dovetail on what Tom Lambert said, you know, the nineteen eighties, I was a military science uh kid going to RTC. We talked about the Soviet Union. And could we pay guns or butter? You know, we're gonna bankrupt the Soviet Union because they can't build any more guns. They gotta have butter to feed their their citizens. And so Reagan, of course, we bankrupted the Soviet Union. But because they couldn't keep up with us in the arms race, but you know, we don't have that situation again. So when people say, I don't have time, when people come to passing, they talk about um. A trail versus funding police and I'm like. Call me and sit down and have a conversation or. Could they pull up our city's budget that's posted online? And you go all the way to the back. It's our capital improvement program at the very end. And you can see the funding sources for capital. Right? And it's not general fund. And so remember the general funds are unobligated that we use primarily for payroll. And the day-to-day, but look at the categories of what we fund today for general funds. And then look at what we fund for, where the source of funds are for capital dollars, right? So just pull up the budget, see what it is. Mostly capital projects are funded through SPOLOST, right, Richard?
Correct, that is correct.
And and just like Tom mentioned, you can't, you can't pay payroll for that. So it, you know, we have to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. We're we're on all streets here, all all programs here. We're doing policing. We're doing zoning. We're doing all sorts of things. We have tons of departments. That's why I have a paid professional city administrator that runs the city. And and we take full faith and trust in in him to execute that the budgets that we implement. The budgets that we approve and the plans we approve as well, so. And thank you so much.
We actually have a pretty small government compared to cities our size, so I we don't have tons of anything. Uh so we don't have tons of departments, but go ahead. Tom, you're gonna call for the question? This is supposed to be approved. Oh, we.
No, we don't. Nope, we don't. No, we don't.
No, we don't.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
See the other one. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries.
The next item is authorization to provide local matching funds for local maintenance and infrastructure grant safety improvements. Michael Smith.
Okay, continuing on the safety theme, um. We're we presenting this tonight uh with this hasn't been presented before, but we're um on a deadline for getting this submitted to the state. So we're requesting. Approval to provide the matching funds required for uh the state. Has some uh safety money targeted through the local maintenance infrastructure grant program um that we. Often use that money for paving, but this is specifically uh targeted for safety. And there's up to four hundred thousand dollars available, so we're applying for the full four hundred thousand. Uh we've got five projects identified there. The the required city match is not necessary. If you add those numbers up, that's not necessarily the. Total project cost, but that just shows what the city would be obligated. To provide if we received all the money from the state. Um the first two projects on the list have have already been funded and approved. Um so if we were to get those funds, we would, we would take them. The money that the city had budgeted and we could use that to provide the match for the other projects. Uh those are the two Hawk or pedestrian hybrid hybrid beacon projects that we're planning to build this summer. The uh the next three projects on the list are all um. Crosswalk improvements that will include the the rapid flashing beacons, the. The location at at Shandley Donway that the mayor mentioned. We're proposing to move that crossing to the north side of Kingsdown Road and to also. Do some curb work to narrow that crossing. Uh that's a really wide entrance there. And then. The last one is a uh. Is to is for the median on Hammond where there's not a signal. To put in a channeled turn there. The the state calls it, they're called R-cuts, but it's basically. To channel the traffic so that you could still turn left. Into the driveways on both sides, but you can't turn left out of the driveway. So coming out of the mall. You wouldn't be able to turn left on Hammond, but you could still turn left into the mall. And that's. Hammond is in the safety action plan as a high injury network and one of the. Um. Reports that we got and then and the input for that safety plan was about. All the driveways and the turns on Hammond Drive. So and it's it's all within the right of way, so that would be a pretty uh simple project to implement. So these are the projects we're recommending and just requesting uh the council's um approval of the the matching funds.
This is a business item.
Move to approve.
Move by John. Second by Stacy. Any questions? Go ahead, John.
Yeah, going back to your chart, Michael, I see the Shandley Dunn Woody crosswalk Kingsdown Road. I don't remember this being discussed before, but your chart doesn't show the rapid. Flashing beacon, but you're saying it does have it.
Yes, I I just, I didn't put that in there because it included, the other ones are. Pretty much just doing a crosswalk and a beacon, but that one included some curb work and narrowing the opening. So just, it was just the way I worded it. I didn't. Specifically mention the R F B, but that is in the plan.
As far as that project or all these projects, are we going forward with these projects, whether or not we get the grant funding? Or do we need to come back and fund any of these? Where are we in the funding of these projects and where are we moving forward, whether we get the grant or not?
Uh the first two are funded regardless.
Right.
The the next four don't have designated funding now, although. There's um. On the RFBs, there may be another pot of money where we can get the equipment. And just have to install them ourselves, but um. Other than that, this would be something that would have to be programmed in a. A future budget. Uh we do have the ARPA safety money, but. The grant that Jonathan talked about earlier is gonna require a significant match, so we're. We're kind of holding that money right now for for match towards that grant, so. Um. Yeah, to summarize, the first two are taken care of. The next four, we'd have to identify some funding if we don't get this.
All right, I'm looking forward to seeing these projects move forward and hopefully we uh get some funding aspects. Well, final point, I just want to say thank you. I noticed that the signage. On two eighty-five, as you're going under Peachtree and North Peachtree Road, and I believe Shaleford. The signs that were fifty years old showing turn lanes and things like that have been replaced. They look beautiful. G dot, thank you very much. Thank you for reaching out to them. That uh it alleviates some confusion, so thank you for that.
Um. This is separate from the six hundred thousand we're getting from G dot for paving. This is a separate amount of money.
Yes, this is in addition to that. And it's specifically, G dot specifically designating it for safety.
And safety is pedestrian and transportation? Yes.
Yes.
And is C I, is the CID partnering in any of this or we don't know yet?
Uh they're partnering in the one on perimeter center west.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't talked to him about the Hammond money at this point.
All right, thank you. Uh this is an action item. Oh, we did. I'm so sorry. All in fa- all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. That passes unanimously, Sharon.
Item number twelve is a resolution of commitment to provide local matching funds for federal funding awarded for transportation projects. So this is similar. This is the first time that you will be seeing this. It's a resolution. Of a commitment to provide local funding match for um federal funds through A R C's tip program. It is the Land Regional Commission's Transportation Improvement Program. Um A R C had an open call for projects um to federally fund projects. For fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight. As part of the tip application, a resolution is needed um stating a funding commitment um for the match. Um based on current industry standards, staff recommends applying for. Additional federal funds for the P E phase of Winter Chapel um Road Phase Two. And the amount of six hundred thousand dollars and additional federal funds for P E and right away for. The Village Crossroads Project and the amount of seven point four million. Um because these projects were previously funded with local dollars. Um these new federal requests will not require any additional local funding. And the match requirement is covered under the existing local commitments already allocated for the project.
Okay. Questions, comments? It's an action item?
Just to verify though, I was asking, uh it's kind of a. When, when, when is, when will we find out, by the way? Yeah, when, how does this?
So the applications are due May sixth, so which is, I believe, Monday, um hence the first reading. Um and then um we should know. But fiscal year starts twenty, fiscal year twenty-five starts July one of twenty-four, so it should be pretty soon, yes.
And then we would notify, because right now we've got SPOLOST funding, SPOLOST dollars, so. That could be a adjustment to that SPOLOST funding if we get the federal additional funds.
So we would keep whatever is currently allocated as local dollars. We would just not need any future local dollars. Um you know, costs. Industry costs are coming in very high for both P E and construction. So we'd be able to use those future dollars in other places.
Okay, thank you. Move to approve.
Move by Tom.
Second.
Second by Rob. All in, oh, any further questions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Eric. When we do our C I P process this summer. Right, that's what it's called, right? Um I think it would be helpful, given that we kind of know the great calendar and stuff. That we identify the projects we want to apply for as much as possible during that process. So that we can be ahead of any curve we need to be ahead of. Rich, okay, Richard is here. Okay, again, that post, I should make y'all sit in the middle.
The next item on the agenda is a contract with T S W for comprehensive. Comprehensive Plan Unified Development Code, Richard McLeod.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh we're asking for the mayor or city manager or designate to execute all documents necessary appropriate to sign the contract with T S W. To lead the team to do the comprehensive plan and the unified development code. We uh in March, we went out to bid on this. Four firms submitted. Uh these were Pond, T S W, Kendig, Keast, and Clarion. The ranking committee was made up of the economic development director, the deputy public works director. Community development director and the deputy community development director. Uh we each ranked them in terms of their proposal, qualifications. Uh we then chose the three highest bids to come in for interviews. We interviewed them. We ranked them again on. Their interview skills and followed on the possible proposals. And we came up with the following. T S W scored three hundred fifty points. Clarion was three hundred and ten. Kendig Keith, two hundred and eighty. Pond was one hundred and eighty. So we would recommend that uh we award the bid to T S W in the amount of four hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. This was a budget, budget item.
Ten dollars on the table.
Two thousand, uh twenty-four budget, so.
So before we go any further, I think I missed this on agenda review. Do we have this as a discussion item?
Yeah.
No, okay, so can we wait two weeks? Because I really believe in the process that I've defined. And if this isn't an emergency, um. We can talk about it as a, we can talk about it and just not vote on it, if that's okay. I'm sorry, I didn't catch it on agenda review and. Yeah, okay, so I have questions, but does anyone else? Have questions on this? Uh Tom, go ahead, and then Catherine.
Um yeah, uh thank you, Richard. Um yeah. We've, we've talked a lot about this and the importance of this, and I think it's. A great idea that we're doing. The update. Along with the the code rewrite, um because to make sure, you know, one of my frustrations sometimes has been when they contradict each other. So hopefully doing them together. They will be in harmony and uh and paint a much clearer picture to our residents and to. The potential developers of what the community is looking for. Um I read the uh T S W's um proposal. Overall impressed with their plan. Um I know we've used T S W, I believe they did the village. Master plan and and uh that went well. I do, I do have a couple of questions, though. Uh one section uh. Of the of their proposal talks about additional services. Um and there were four specific additional services that were highlighted. That would be. Additional fees, of course, um. And I guess the first question is if we wanted to contract any of these additional services, would that be done? When the contract is signed? Could those be add-ins later?
Yes.
Or either or?
There would be add-ins, so we would come back to you if we wanted to add uh those. We would come back to you all with a contract amendment.
Okay, so um. The first one I'd like to talk about is the quality of life element for the comprehensive plan. I'm actually surprised that's not included. I guess that's not an A R C requirement. Um uh but certainly uh the elements that are included in that. Um I think are important to the community. The add-on is relatively speaking, um. Rather small, less than six thousand dollars to add that on. I would like to consider, um and others can chime in, that we consider that add-on with a caveat. That I I would hope that that would be a part of the community discussion and we're not just getting a boilerplate uh section added to the plan that. Is not specific to Dunwoody. I'd wanted to have the community input um and be very specific to us. If that's what they're talking about. Then I would favor adding that to our comprehensive plan. If it's just gonna be some boilerplate page that they shove in there, then forget about it. Um. And um the small area concept plans, um. They're roughly. Under thirty thousand dollars. If we were to do a smaller area concept plan on its standalone, what would that cost be? Would it be significantly more money?
Typically, they're around fifty thousand dollars. How big the area is. Like Jet Ferry was an area that we thought about uh. From the the retreat. That's why we had them include that in there. Um.
And yeah, and that's, that's the main reason I'm bringing that up is all of our um. Our our commercial areas have. A a separate standalone plan except for the Jet Ferry and the Winter Chapel areas. Um and those are two areas that personally I'd like to see the city pay a little bit more attention to. I think there's a lot of opportunity there. Um and and also to send a clear message to any future developments, hey, what 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 exactly? Are we looking for in these areas? Uh again, this is not. A decision for me to make. I'm just putting that out there for discussion, uh since we're not voting tonight. And and perhaps we don't even need to make that decision before we sign the official contract. We could, that could be an add-in at some point, but I'd like us to at least consider um. Those areas being included as uh small area concept plans, so that so that all of our. Uh commercial nodes have. A standalone client for that.
Yes, one area that I think that's probably needs it is Georgetown because there's a loose master plan, but it. Doesn't have the weight of like the village or the perimeter center.
Yeah, because we do have one, but I guess it's not up to the same standard or specificity that, okay. Um I guess that's something that we will have to discuss and have a conversation on. Um. And. I believe, oh, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at my notes here. Oh, the the code testing.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Wouldn't that be a part of making sure that what we have is?
So.
Viable?
The staff is all professional. They're professional. Um but literally, sometimes we all write the best of codes, but sometimes when you give them to.
A developer.
Developer. They'll find a way. So it's literally sitting down with a handful of developers and saying. Okay, take your best shot. Um but that's a process that we have to go through, so.
Okay, uh it's a process we have to go, or that's a a process we could go through in addition?
For that fee, that that they will.
Right, right. So, okay, uh thank you. That's the only questions I have.
Yeah.
Catherine?
I have questions on a similar uh theme, but we've talked about most of those. So the tech manual, is that something you would think you would want?
You know. Ultimately, yes, but um for continuity. Suppose I left and Paul left and everybody left, it helps. The new people. Drill down and understand the code, how to apply it, so. drill down and understand the code, how to apply it, so.
Okay, so wishlist.
Yes.
Wishlist, okay. And then I know just about every meeting since I've been on council, we've been doing some kind of zone rewrite or discussion. Do you maintain a list of things that look, you know, just things that we have been hoping to change that they're gonna start with?
Yes, and Paul and I have kept lists, including so- some of the comments from your, the council members, so.
Okay, and what do you, could you outline the focus groups, what, what you envision for that?
What do you?
Focus groups is a part of this process.
Steering committee?
No, they have focus groups.
It says focus groups.
Yeah, they used them in the village, too.
Right.
Right, I just want to hear the thoughts on that process.
People like the large landowners and perimeter center, uh, KDC, the mall. They're big enough and have enough shake to, uh, rattle the cage, so we want to feed back from them, um, certainly members of, uh, the village and, uh, the other areas and the homeowners. Homeowners are key to this, so.
And you suggested that might be a long
Yes.
process, like committed
Yes.
citizens on that one. Okay, well, I'm, I'm excited to, to get going on that, so thank you.
Uh, Rob?
So I have a question that's maybe a little tangential to this. As you are well aware, we're working on, um, DEIB certification through the GMA. And one of our plans is to, um, double hat the public meeting requirement for that certification with this process, so that we don't have to pay for two public meetings. Is TSW aware that we're planning to do that? Do they understand how we're going to be integrating kind of that feedback into this other kind of not really related, um, process?
So we already do a, a lot of that. So it's not much of a they don't have to really tie to do that.
I, I, I just want to make sure, because it's, it doesn't come up in here, but I know that that's the plan. I just want to make sure that it's on people's minds and especially, um, on, on the mind of the, the person who's put in a bid that
Right.
part of their meeting is going to be temporarily hijacked by city staff for another purpose.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And it's, it's more that it's gonna fall on us than consultants.
All right, so I have some. First of all, I think if we, we're sort of saying that some of these extras, like the small area plans we want to do, does that affect the bid process? Like if we're saying that we know we want to do the manual or whatever you recommend. When you looked at the bids, was that all apple to apple? Or if we add an extra? If, like, I'm not asking you the question to answer now, I'm asking y'all to look back with John Gates and make sure that the bids. If, if we know from this conversation that we're pretty committed to doing a few small area plans, and the other bidders included those small area plans. We just got to make sure we're not breaking any bidding rules. So if y'all could, I'm not asking for the answer today, just make sure be- before this comes back. And then I, as you know, and Long and John have been here a really long time, and the quality of community meetings for these things is really essential to getting decent information. The reason the Georgetown plan is kind of wishy is because the facilitators at those meetings couldn't get it done. So, um, you know, we're, we're gonna have some internal controls over some of them. I'm asking, like, what's the internal plan? We did so well with a different strategy with Edge City where we had, they had, if I'm not mistaken, and Michael's not here, an outside group running their public meetings. TSW does not plan to do that, or do they?
Uh, they don't have a
They did do it.
Third-party group doing.
Right, but they know that our expectations are the same level if not better than what they did in the village, correct?
Yes. They're looking at it just like the village.
Okay.
Which the village knocked the socks off.
Right, it did, it did, and part of that was because it was about the village.
Correct.
But these are the kind of, this process, at the end of the day, when we finish, we want people to feel like they had the ability to, and we want to be able to say, you could have been there. Or you could have filled out a survey, whatever it is. We want to make sure people feel like they had the ability to participate. Okay. Anybody else have questions? John?
I'll just reiterate that it's required by law that we do this project.
Yes.
Correct.
So it's not let, this isn't an option, we have to do this project.
That's correct, the comprehensive plan is.
And it sounded like there was a staff thinks that maybe we need to do more on Georgetown in particular.
That was in talking about, um, areas that don't have a village plan or the, uh, CID. Uh, because those were very robust projects.
I'm not against doing side projects, but I do agree that the Georgetown area is large and it's prime for redevelopment. And there's different segments of it, so we, maybe we should look at Georgetown a little closer than the others. Again, I'm not against adding on others, I just think some of the other ones are so small and little redevelopment, where Georgetown is
Right.
broken apart, different land uses, some areas are prime for redevelopment. If there was anything I wanted to throw more money at to have better planning, it would be at Georgetown, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, can we put this on consent?
Yes.
Okay, we'll put it on consent for next time, thank you. All right. Michelle, you're up again. Because this is a discussion chair, it doesn't have to read it. It's the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Peachtree Corners for the Winter Chapel Path Phase Two project.
Yes, so, um, we have a IGA that we're requesting, um, to move forward with the city of Peachtree Corners. Um, the project does jog slightly outside of the city limits for like point one six miles, so roughly about thirty percent of the project um, goes outside of Dunwoody. Um, so we have the IGA details, um, what Dunwoody and Peachtree Corners responsibilities would be. Um, Dunwoody would have PE design oversight along with right-of-way acquisition costs within the city of Dunwoody. And then it would, um, be responsible for construction costs based off of the project length, which is roughly about seventy percent of, um, the project cost. Um, and then Peachtree Corners will be responsible for right-of-way acquisition costs within their city limits, and then thirty percent of the construction costs. Um, this item will be going to, um, the city of Peachtree Corners, um, council, um, they'll be taking action next month.
Okay, anybody have questions? Consent, everybody okay with that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Pulling up the presentation.
Okay.
Everybody see that?
Oh, no, I can see it on my own computer, sorry. My computer, I didn't think about looking up. It's not, it's not even loading at the moment. Up here it comes, it comes, okay.
Okay, I'm here to talk about proposed improvements on Happy Hollow Road. The reason where, it's been a longstanding goal of the city to have sidewalks on both sides of all collector and arterial roadways in the city. Happy Hollow is classified as a collector roadway. We added sidewalks on the east side of the road in the first few years after incorporation. That's shown in green on the map. And then Happy Hollow is the big, the road in the middle there. Infill Development has added two short segments, a sidewalk on the west side of the road, they're shown in yellow here. And then the rest of the west side of the road, it's shown in red, does not currently have sidewalks. And there's a, there's a couple of reasons we're bringing this forward now. Uh, first is that Happy Hollow is now on the paving list for twenty twenty seven. And when we repaved the road, there's some stormwater issues that we'd like to address. The last time the road was paved by DeKalb County, they, they built up the asphalt over the gutter, as you can see in the picture on the left, and so it sticks up several inches, and then a lot of the roadway has the, the older style, uh, we call it rollback uh, curb that you see in a lot of the neighborhoods in Dunwoody, where there's a bump up into the, to the driveway, so um, not only does that cut down on how much water that the, uh, the buildup cuts down on how much water can, the gutter can carry. But it also creates a pretty severe bump for people going into their driveways, and so naturally, some of, some people out there have filled it in, which then blocks the flow of, of water. Um, and then this, the area where we're having the, the drainage problems is relatively flat, and there's not a lot of storm drains or pipe to carry the water, so all this kind of combines to there's places where the water leaves the roadway and ends up in people's yards, you can see in the picture on the right, and a heavy rain. They get a lot of standing water in their yard, and so you know, the, the solution is to redo that gutter and add some storm drainage. And so the, the best time to do that would be just ahead of the paving out there. Couple other areas on the, this is mostly all on the south end of the, of Happy Hollow. There's some places that don't have curb, and it goes into a roadside ditch, there's been erosion over the years. And, you know, eventually, this, it starts to eat away into the driveways, you can see in the picture on the right. And so if we're gonna be replacing the curb and dealing with these drainage issues ahead of the paving, then that's also a good time to add the sidewalk while we're out there, you know, replacing the curb. And so that's why we're looking at this project ahead of the paving in twenty twenty seven. As we look at the design, that, you know, the city's complete street policy uh, says that we should consider all road users, uh, when we're planning these projects, and so we looked at the context, particularly for bicycle users. Happy Hollow is identified as a bike route in our transportation plan. And there are also two proposed trail projects in the ma- Trail Master Plan that intersect with Happy Hollow, one at Peeler and one that crosses, um, about halfway up Happy Hollow. So in this constant context, we considered bicycle accommodations as part of our concept plan. As far as what type of accommodation, we, we landed on bike lanes primarily because about two-thirds of the existing roadway is already wide enough. If you narrow the trap, the vehicle lanes to ten feet, there's already enough pavement to add bike lanes without moving curb. Uh, mostly on the north end of Happy Hollow. I skipped a slide here. But shown here, uh, the north end is where the area circled is where the road's already wide enough for bike lanes. Federal Highway Administration came out with some guidance a few years ago on determining what types of bike facilities work best on different roadways. Uh, when you look at the traffic volume and the speeds. And, uh, the traffic volume on Happy Hollow is relatively low, it's under four thousand cars a day, which fits into the area where bike lanes are a good solution. The, the speed, posted speed limit is thirty-five miles an hour. However, the eighty-fifth percentile speed, meaning you know, eighty-five percent of the cars are going under that speed is, is higher than the thir- than, um, thirty-five, which is shown by the red dot here. So I think if we look at adding bike lanes, the design needs to have some things in it to try to mitigate the speeds and bring those down closer to the to the posted speed limit, and I'll talk about that more in a minute. The, the proposed plan that we've come up with consists of ten-foot vehicle lanes in both directions and four-foot bike lane. Uh, the east side, as I mentioned earlier, already has sidewalk, we would be adding a six-foot sidewalk on the west side with a two-to-four-foot buffer. Depending on utility poles and right-of-way constraints, that would vary some. Walking through the, the plan from starting at the north end at Dunwoody Club. The, this is the section of the roadway, roadway where it's already wide enough for bike lanes, so mainly what we would be doing is replacing some of the roll curb where necessary with standard curb, and then uh, adding the six-foot sidewalk on the west side of the road. Some pictures of the existing conditions out there, this is near the north end, looking south. You've got a pretty flat shoulder and fairly open space there to add sidewalk. A little bit further south of that, there is a section where the the road or the topography slopes away from the road, some of the lots sit lower. This is a section where a retaining wall would be needed to, to put the sidewalk in. You can also see that in this area, the utility poles are on that side, we would as, as much as possible, we would look to meander the sidewalk around the utility poles to avoid having to relocate those. Moving a little further south, uh, this segment is where the existing, there's a couple of sections of existing sidewalk. We would be filling in between those, uh, some road widening would be required at the at the widest point, it would be seven feet of additional pavement, but in general, it's gonna be less than five feet that would need to be widened to get bike lanes on both sides. Uh, there's some places on this section that don't have curb, where we'd be adding curb, and we'd be adding stormwater improvements. This is that section between the two sidewalk, existing sidewalks. And then the last section at south end at Peeler, this is where I said, as I said, most of the, uh, stormwater issues are. And so we would be doing some improvements on both sides of the road here, there's places where we would add curb, that there's no curb on some parts of the east side. We would adjust the curb on the west side, add, add drainage and, and do the sidewalk, uh, with some, also some widening here. Typically four to five feet. And this is a, these, this shows, uh, this picture has some of that low-lying area where the water tends to end up in people's yards instead of, uh, on the roadway. Uh, last year, we did, uh, we advertised for public comment. And we received over a hundred comments through the, the project page on the city's website. Uh, the, the respondents were pretty evenly split on supporting or not supporting the project. Um, there wasn't, there weren't really very many comments specifically about bicycle lanes or bicycle accommodations, it tended to either be we support all of it, or we don't support any of it. The most common objection is that there's sidewalk already on one side of the road, but another concern was speeding. So, and then some of the other concerns were uh, the stormwater issues, and then just the general condition of the pavement. The, the positive part of this project is that it would address, it would seek to address the stormwater and the paving uh, concerns, and we're looking at ways to mitigate, to incorporate speed mitigation in the, in the design. Couple of things we're looking at with speed are, there's a, a couple of, one location at Fontainebleau neighborhood. And then another one where the future trail would cross that are would be logical places to have an enhanced crosswalk, something that would give pedestrians an easier way to cross the road and, um, try to slow speeds down at the same time. The south end, there's a, a section of the south end that uh, would, would fit well within, uh, it would be a location where the radar speed sign would, would potentially be effective. Um, we're also, you know, obviously enforcement is something that could be looked at. And then working with property owners, a lot of this is gonna be in people's front yards, so working with property owners to see places where we can plant understory trees in the landscape buffer to maybe help visually narrow the roadway. And then, of course, we are planning to narrow the lanes. Another thing that we've talked about is potentially incorporating, um, splitter islands, similar to what we did on North Peachtree, on the north end of North Peachtree to help calm traffic. But we'd have to look, look at that, there, that may we're already using most of the available right-of-way, so incorporating those maybe would bump things out of the right-of-way, we'd have to look at that. Uh, I didn't mention earlier, but most of this project I didn't mention earlier, but most of this project is within the existing right of way. There are a few places where we would, a couple of parcels where we would need a small sliver of right of way and then a few places where we would need some temporary easements. But mostly it fits within the existing right of way. So the the next steps that we're recommending is because of the paving plan in twenty twenty seven, we'd like to go ahead and focus on the south end. That's the where the stormwater issues are. We could connect up the existing sidewalk segments that don't connect now and take it up to King's, King's Glen Court would be a stopping point. From that point north, when we repave, we could go ahead and restripe for bike lanes, but we could just, the sidewalk for that section could be a future project. That's where some of the topography challenges are and it's and so we're, we would like to just recommend focusing on the south end for now and trying to improve the drainage and and go ahead and put the sidewalk in. And that's my presentation. I'll answer any questions.
Questions, anybody? John, sorry.
Thank you, Michael. Reading your memo, I saw that there was two drainage easements that might be needed on two properties. Drainage is one of those issues that we get, talked about a lot. So those drainage easements, the water, sometimes I, this is what I don't know. Where does the water go some days, right? It's coming off our roads and where does it go? It's going, we're going to put an easement on somebody's property. Explain to me how it works. I just want to make sure it's not getting, making anything worse.
No, no, on all the projects, we look at the pre-construction flow and the post-construction flow. And we match the post-construction so we don't increase the flow after construction. We use, that's why sometimes we have to put in expensive underground detention. So we would take a look at that, this, the easements you're talking about. There's one place where the pipe that we would put in goes slightly off the right of way and there would be like a manhole there. And that manhole sits on, kind of at the front corner of two properties on the property line. And so we would want to get a permanent easement to be able to access and maintain that manhole. But the the water at that point is still in a pipe system before it goes downstream somewhere and outlets.
Okay. My other question really comes down to the sidewalk width. We installed the sidewalk, I guess, on the east side, five feet. We're thinking of installing the sidewalk on the west side, six feet. Where or when did we change the width? In our plans, when did we change that? Is what's in our plan now for sidewalk, average typical sidewalk width?
Yeah, I don't remember the date, but I know, I I think I remember it. It came up on the shame we done with Womack project, I believe, is the first time we switched. Based on council discussion, we went to a six foot sidewalk. And that's what we've been incorporating since.
We have codified the six feet. And I'm guessing the houses that built the five foot sidewalk, put in the five foot sidewalk prior to us making that change.
Yes, I think the sidewalk that's out there on that side was five feet because it was prior to that. At least I know one of them is for sure.
Okay, doesn't make any sense to add the other foot? No, right? I mean, it doesn't make sense for us to tear it up, does it? I mean, I'm just trying to think of.
Yeah, we we haven't really looked at that, but.
We've never retrofit before, I guess. I'm trying, I'm trying to think it all through. What what have we come up to this subject matter before?
There are places where we've for like a short section, especially like a repair or a smaller modification. We've just matched what's there because it was such a short section. This one is a lot, you know, there's a lot more new that we would be adding than existing that's already there. So I think that's why we.
Yeah, I'm not angling from one way or the other. I just wondered if we thought about all this.
Yeah, we we'd have to give some thought to how to transition it in that one area, I guess.
And my final point was you mentioned the chicanes or the traffic calming that could be possible on on Happy Hollow. How does that, if we were to do something like that, would that be in compliance with our policies? And if so, how does that treat the other traffic calming streets that are still paying for traffic calming today? And for the next twenty years versus the residents of Happy Hollow, who I'm guessing wouldn't have to pay because the city put it in?
That's a good question. I I think because it is not a neighborhood street, I mean, there are houses on the street, but because it is a collector roadway, I think we would treat it different. I mean, this is something we probably need to discuss with city attorney and everybody. But I think we would treat it differently because it is a collector roadway. And it, you know, for that same reason, it wouldn't be a good candidate for speed humps, but this would be more of a passive type.
I agree with you, but I'd also think the same thing on North Peachtree where they put in that other stuff. Maybe I was, I would see that as a collector, maybe it's classified differently, but I see it being similar. So I just want to make sure that we're treating equal streets fairly inequitably versus some residents paying for traffic calming and others have it installed by the city without following the policy.
Yeah, I I think that's a good point to run down and get a good answer on.
Thank you. You just mentioned it, so I wanted to make sure I asked the question. Thank you. Other questions?
I want to add on to that, which is, is that traffic calming devices are not always popular. And one of the advantages of our policy isn't just that the neighborhood subsidizes it or helps pay for it. It's that they have input. And I think, I think it's fine if we want to change the rules. Potent, let me say it this way, potentially it could be fine to change the rules, but we need to talk about it. Because, you know, I'm all for like putting speed bumps all over Dunwoody, but I don't know that that would be particularly well received. So, and I appreciate that because, you know, if this was a commercial street and we were allowed to do it, it would be like one thing. But there are people who live on that street and I'm not sure why their ability to self determine is taken away when somebody on my street would get to vote essentially. So I think it's all worth looking into. I do wonder if, you know, I know there's sidewalks on both sides or there will be on the street. If also safety beacons and stuff like that might, or if there's people, enough people crossing the street, if that might be also a way to at least slow people down some, you know, when people, at least when they're crossing the street.
Yes, and I did want to mention, so the the idea of the splitter islands, that's not in the plan now. We're not showing that now. We were just brainstorming ways to maybe, you know, depending on how far people wanted to go on reducing speeds, that would be an idea. But and then as far as the beacons, that's those two places where we were saying an enhanced crossing. We haven't really looked at details on that, but I think, you know, beacons are potentially a mini roundabout that fits within the roadway or something there that, like I said, would be a safe crossing and slow cars down is what we would look at at those two locations.
Yep. Yeah, I just like to comment on the 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 speed control as well, because I do get frequent comments and concerns from some of the residents there about the speed on that road. It's relatively straight and flat and which encourages fast and wide, which all three can encourage people to drive faster. So anything that we can incorporate, I think would be appreciated. And, you know, the two, I I I like the two locations that you emphasized for enhanced pedestrian crossing. You know, the Fountain Blue entrance isn't only an entrance into a community, but the Fountain Blue Swim and Tennis is just down the street from that entrance and a lot of that neighborhood lives across Happy Hollow. So having an opportunity to safely cross at an area which tends to get the faster cars, I think would be well received there. And I, and again, I don't know if elevated crosswalks are an option on that type of road or not. I also don't know how the chicanes would interfere with the bike lanes. So I don't, I don't know what the best option is, but I appreciate that you're exploring those because that is a concern there. And I also do like the phased approach to this so that we can address the majority of the issues, especially with the stormwater down on the south end. We could still get the bike accommodations by the paving just with with paint and, you know, address the northern part of that sidewalk when funding and other resources are available. So thank you.
So, Michael, a couple of different, just generic questions. Would the stormwater fee, could we apply possibly? I'm looking at budget, right? And I'm thinking about the SPOST and it's one pie, right? And so, and you want to get this done by potentially twenty twenty seven, the bottom. I guess we'll have to figure out of how to get there and get engineering design, yada yada, and get a, get an estimate, right? And get that in a budget for SPOST funding. Would 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 also possible for that stormwater fee potentially use, use for part of that project too?
The stormwater fees can be used for stormwater aspects of the project. And we've done that occasionally. We haven't done a lot because we've had so many stormwater needs, but that is an option.
And so when we think about just timing of the funding or, I got us, I'm skipping forward now to real real next steps. What what does that really look like? What do you all need to do and what do you need from us? To to get to a point where at least that first phase is, you know, what would you, you want to do like the whole? Is it a concept design? Is it engineering? And when you want to do that?
We have a concept design and we're looking for consensus on that for the whole corridor, just so we know what we're working towards. But then we would, the next step would be to do the actual, you know, detailed design just on the south end up to that, that point that we talked about and get that, get that done. And then you would move into utility coordination right away and and plan for, if we're going to pave it in twenty twenty seven, we would want to start the construction sometime in twenty twenty six.
So so phase two construction, by, done by end of twenty twenty six?
Phase one. Phase two, the north end is, we're kind of showing as long range. We, we don't have funding for that. And we're, we are focusing on the south end where we can fix those drainage problems.
And but you can, we can still address the pedestrian crossings, right? I mean.
This, this wouldn't go, we could, we could probably stretch just a little bit further to get to that first, that one crossing near where the trails would cross. But this, this wouldn't go all the way up to Fountain Blue. I mean, we could, we could look at putting a crossing in there, but we wouldn't have the sidewalk on one side.
I'd like to look at that and if we could look at that in coordination with the repaving, putting those pedestrian crossings, that'd be great. Because yeah, if you, if you say, okay, fine, we're not going to do sidewalk, but at least we're going to restripe for bike lanes and put in the crossing islands.
Yes, okay.
Thanks.
To Tom's point, you know, to get to the swim tennis club. I mean, that would be nice if we could.
Okay.
So is this like ready for action or you're just educating us tonight?
Well, I was just educating and looking for consensus. If if everybody's comfortable with the plan, we'll move forward with design.
I think you got feedback.
About the SPOST funding, I mean, we've got it current, our CIP is already out to twenty twenty eight right now, and it doesn't have this at all in the SPOST. So what what, we're going to have to cut some things from SPOST or to fund this then?
I, I was thinking that there was money in a future year for this, but it could just be my draft for next year. So we're, we're already looking at where things need to be. Okay, so, well, I mean, that will, we can, I think we have funding to do design work. We'll address construction funding through the budget process this year.
Okay, thanks.
Richard, so we're in the newest SPOST, right? It started, is that correct? The revenue from the newest SPOST, I get confused on calendars.
The SPOST one ended March, SPOST two. Just started this.
Okay, so we have no idea what it feels like yet. Okay.
But we do not know.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, chief.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am coming before you to request additional personnel be added to the department staff by way of public safety ambassadors. If you recall in the Barry Dunn study, they were called actually community service officers. It's the same, same thing. As the city had been continuing to grow, our call volume has increased tremendously. Our neighboring cities, Marietta, City Milton, they've had this ambassador program in place for some time. And what this allows is for a lot of the low risk nature, non emergency calls, they'll be able to respond to them. A perfect example was the water main break. That would have been a community service officer to go over there, leave our officers on the road rather than taking one of them off of the road. Their abilities, they would be able to, but not limited to, take reports on lost or found property, disabled or abandoned vehicles. Assisting officers with with vehicle towing, crime scene evidence collection, just a whole slew of different calls that we respond to. That, you know, we can leave our officers for a higher priority calls while these ambassadors can take, you know, lost cell phones, et cetera. And working with the finance director and human resources director. We were looking, so to fund the vacancies, if approved for starting June first, personnel costs would be around two hundred sixty thousand dollars. We started looking at equipment. We came up with a very low cost vehicle. It's basically a Ford, what they call Maverick pickup trucks. They average for two vehicles be about a little over ninety one thousand dollars, bringing up to about three hundred fifty three thousand. That would just be the prorated rate for the first year. Obviously, the equipment we wouldn't need to budget for next year since we would take care of it this year. So for a full year of personnel costs would be four hundred forty five thousand, four hundred. So this was recommended by Barry Dunn. We have done our research and we have spoken to the other departments that have this program going and it is very successful. I'm also looking at this as a possible recruitment tool because if we can focus on, you only have to be eighteen to work in this position, hopefully we would get those young, younger individuals that are aspiring to be police officers. And that would be a good vetting process until they were, they became of age to become police officers. So with campus two forty four, High Street, everything coming up, this would be an additional force multiplier to our patrol division. And that is what I am requesting.
Hi, questions, Rob?
Yes, sir. I I guess, you know, obviously I think we all like this idea. And this question is maybe more directed for the the council members on the the budget committee. Has, has this request factored into the budget we're preparing for the year or is this something new that's being added up to existing budget?
It's new, it's being added on. But we'll start the budget process like in three months, I think, July. I can't even believe it's almost May.
So for this year with the, after speaking with Richard, to fund it for this year would just be with our vacancies that we currently have, that we've had. We are currently, we have six openings and Richard can explain a little bit further. And then obviously if it was approved, we would budget for it.
So conceivably, we could hire these folks and then also miraculously fill our six vacancies.
That would be my hope, sir.
And in which case, we would need to make sure we have another backup source of funding identified. I don't know if it's fund balance or, I guess, maybe we could use SPOST for some of the equipment. But just, just kind of a general budgetary question about how they're going to be funded this year.
I mean, Richard's coming up. You want to go ahead, Richard?
So as Chief mentioned, yes, we've got some vacancies right now. Yes, we'd love to fill them all. So far, for the first quarter, police and their salaries and wages underran budget one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Obviously, if you multiply that by four quarters, that's five hundred and sixty thousand. As you mentioned, we hope to have those positions filled and not underrun like that. But given that dollar amount, we certainly think we can cover the approximately two hundred and sixty thousand that we're going to get there. As far as the budget for next year, yes, when we go through the budget process, as the mayor mentioned in July, we will add these positions to their, to the budget police, to the police's budget for next year, fully loaded with with all salaries, benefits and everything. And then as we accumulate everything, we'll also forecast revenues out and just see where we stand.
So then I guess the follow up question is we think it'll be easier to hire these positions than sworn officers.
That is correct. We've already had several inquiries. We, we attended a recruiting event at University of North Florida and they were, when we mentioned. When we mentioned that we were proposing this to council, they became very interested. So I've already got two or three that are.
Oh, good, sounds good. Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, John.
Thank you, Chief. I missed a few starting minutes of your presentation.
Yes, sir.
So hopefully I don't miss too much. Um. The, uh, memo talks about adding two to three. You have a estimated first year dollar costs, which is three hundred and fifty three thousand, which seems different than what you just said at the end of your presentation. So maybe I'm wrong.
Yes, sir.
And then, um, I want to look at the salary ranges that you're talking for these individuals. I'm also very interested in that. So first let's talk about, are we hiring four? Are we hiring two, three?
Four.
Four, okay. I would prefer to hire four.
On the memo, I apologize, but I am requesting four.
Okay, I'd prefer to hire four. It's just as easy to hire four all at once and train them and get them up to speed than try to. Easier than doing two or three at a time. So, good, hire four. Um. Let's look at the salary range if you could.
So, uh, it would fall under the grade of one oh five. The minimum would be fifty thousand nine nineteen. Uh, the maximum would be eighty one, four, six, nine.
And now this position requires a GED. Or high school equivalent.
Correct.
Uh, for the same dollar amount, what is the educational background for the technology support specialist? And that's in technology, sorry. For, let's go for the property and evidence technician, same salary. What's?
I'd have to have the job description in front of me.
Again, to me, it seems like we are. It seems high.
Yes, sir.
Nicole was here.
And I, I, I had a question along with that too, because one of the. Job descriptions was to assist the fleet maintenance coordinator who makes less money. So I definitely had a.
Correct. I'm just looking at the ranges going, okay, we're hiring high school graduates. For the same dollar amount that we're hiring. Some more educated, more, the job duties. That's all. I'm just trying to understand where we're at and where do we get this number.
Sure. I worked with the compensation consultant on this and so she's looking at market data from other areas. As the chief mentioned, that do have this position. So also looking at internal equity. With, in particular, she was comparing it to the PSRs who are in grade one oh four. And that this is greater responsibility than what they have. And wanting to keep it at a distance from police officers. We have it graded two grades lower than police officer. So looking at all of that together, she felt that grade one oh five is the right place to slot it.
I think, I think that one of the challenges we're probably having, I'm speaking just for myself, is that it's not. I mean, the starting salary is. What it's probably got to be somewhere, maybe it could be a little lower. But the upper salaries are quite high for this position. And I, I don't know how, I think there's a way to strategically fix this.
We would be looking at the lower end for sure.
Right, so.
In the budget number that was run, I believe Richard can confirm midpoint. It was run at midpoint, so we would expect the actual cost to come in lower than what's being projected.
Okay, but do we think? I don't know what criteria you have to have midpoint.
Midpoint is typically someone who's fully functional in the role. And so with these being new hires, brand new to the role, we'd be looking at the entry. Entry level pay, really.
Okay, I don't know how to fix this, but.
Is there any chance that these could be term employees not to exceed five years? Is there any benefit to that? You don't see these employees. Being there forever, right? You're, you're using this as a hiring mechanism to become an officer.
Not really. Um, the city Marietta, I think they've got about eight and a lot of them do not want. Um, to go any further, you know, um, in the law enforcement career. They're very happy being ambassadors, just like our prisoner transport officers. They love being prisoner transport officers. So. That was just an, in addition, yes, I would like to use that as a recruiting tool if somebody is aspiring to be a police officer, but there are some that will come in here and want to do this, uh, do that position. Full time.
I understand. I just saw it as a recruitment aspect. I'm trying to understand. Um, thank you. Yeah, no other questions. I just thought the salary is a little high.
Yes. And, you know, along with that salary, I mean, they, you know, um, as Nicole stated, I mean, they were going to be exposed to risks. I mean, they are going to be out there interacting with the public. Uh, they will be, um, you know, like I said. Low risk, but we don't know what they're going to encounter. So they do, it is going to carry some risks, uh, being in this, uh, position. Yes, sir.
Joe.
And this is a little bit more of a Nicole. When we advertise, like for public opening job, job requisitions postings, do we actually post the, uh, the pay? Band ranges, is it? It is out there. That's public sector. Okay, so they see that. So they see the upside. There's a huge upside here. And like I'm, I kind of also saw that because I, when I, about the pay band, roughly just call it fifty one K to eighty one K. Let's just call it that. And then the police officers, sworn officers, sixty K to ninety K. And I was like, the aspirational, if I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to say, hey, I came in and I'm running, I'm, I'm making low forties maybe and I'm, I'm happy as can be. And then I've got all this upper range to go or I could be a police officer, you know, so for me, it's just like. Okay, I, I just would like to, it's like, like you said, you've done some salary surveys or compensation analysis, but I. I felt like that pay band was super, super close to the entry level sworn officer. Uh, role as starting off as sixty K, you know, so I'm like starting off at fifty one K and then. He's starting off, or he or she is starting off only at, you know, nine K more than, than them. And so, hmm, anyway.
Police officers do start higher than the minimum because they're reusing the hiring group. So in particular, if we get experienced officers or officers with education, they're starting higher than that lowest number. It's. It is kind of unusual that we hire a police officer at that entry point. It would be more the expectation for, for the ambassador position that it would be starting. At or very near the minimum of their age.
Is, is there any downside to having a, a larger pay band? Or do you, do we have to go all the way up to eighty K? I'm just trying to say, how can we can set people to come in the door? And then they've got a motivation because they've got a nice range to, to promote up through or, I, I, I don't know what to say, right? It's just, it seems like, wow, fifty one K, I guess.
Right, I think that, well, yeah, that too. I think we, in concept, I think, I mean, we are all very excited about this, I think. But perhaps some internal discussions on this particular issue, if you can solve it, you can solve it. If you can't, you can't, but we'll see this again.
I mean, we can adjust it, you know, council's direction is.
We had to be careful in how we direct you because we're not supposed to be running the city. Our question is, is. Like the consequences of having this particular salary range on everything else we do. How's that?
Well, and they, they could be making more money than someone they report to.
Yeah, and also the fleet manager, well, they work with. I don't think they report to.
Well, no, we're not report to, but, but would assist.
With, right, yeah. Right, so anyway, if y'all could just take a look at that, we'd appreciate it. Anybody have any other questions? Thank you. We're very excited to start this program. Because we know it, and then the only other request I have is, is that we get some data points defined so we can measure to see if this is working, you know, how this is working and. Val, you go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I, I just have one, one question. This is more high beams down the road, uh, because we, we have been. Adding staff to department, which is something that is important. I think we all believe that. Uh, do we anticipate, I know we're. Six officers. That six slots that are vacant and you can't hire more until you fill those first, right? Uh, but do we anticipate adding any more staff to the PD by year end and, uh? And if so, what would be the timing of that request just for budgeting purposes to make sure that we're properly allocating, uh, resources? To next year's budget. Um, for example, if you came to us in October with a request for additional officers. Um, but the budget's already pretty much done by then. Uh, I just want to make sure that we're. Anticipating and allocating our resources appropriately.
Yes, sir. Um, so I am planning on requesting additional personnel for twenty five. Um, for this year, the four ambassadors, um, and then of course we have our four personnel starting on one July. Um. Back to your question about where we are with recruiting, um, the mayor alluded to, you know, not lowering our standards. Uh, we had four come in, three sworn, one non-sworn, not one of them made it through because our standards are staying that high. Uh, we do have six in background right now, very optimistic about these, um, however, you know, that we have a very, very thorough background when we're done. Uh, Nicole makes us put it together, file about this high and, um, it does, it weeds out a lot of our applicants that are not going to meet our standards. So. Um, we have been seeing them, uh, in an uptick in our, uh, applications. Um, but at the same time, you know, we're going to do our best to get these six and, uh, by doing so, and then additionally, the additional four. Um, you know, if we keep moving forward, get that crime suppression team, crime, street crimes, you know, whatever we're going to call it. Um, eventually up and running. So eventually, yes, I will be asking for more personnel next year. That's going to be a part of my budget requests, um, coming up for this.
Thank you.
Budget, budget cycle. Yes, sir.
Anybody else? All right, thank you. We look forward to seeing this again soon. All right. Uh, public comments? Uh, you have three minutes. Um, come on up. You have a card? What is it? That's it? Oh. All right, you three minutes, introduce yourself, please.
Yes, ma'am. Um, hi, good evening. My name is Aline Stone and I'm the Southeast Grassroots Manager for the American Heart Association. And I'm here to talk a little bit about the smoke-free ordinance. Um, I go to church here in Dunwoody, at, over at Dunwoody Methodist Church down the road. Um. For my family, I'm happy that I can come here, I can go to church, we can go to restaurants, um, in a smoke-free environment. As someone who works at the Heart Association, I'm also here on behalf of all of the Dunwoody residents and employees whose health I also, I care about. Um, closing the loophole will save lives and it will allow everyone to breathe easy where they live and work, not just in most places. Um, I encourage you to revisit the smoke-free ordinance. And on a personal note, I was really excited to be here and witness all of the talk about the safe streets and, uh, projects that you have going on. I have been hit by a car before and, um, it was, it was really interesting to hear him talk about. Drivers looking left and right because the woman who did hit me said, I looked to my left, but I never saw you on my right. So I think it's really heartening and encouraging to hear that you all are working on this. Um, this will save lives and also just prevent injuries from people having to walk around with a cane for a few months. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think you'll just give your card to Jessica. I'm sorry, go ahead, introduce yourself.
Hi, it's Jasmine Hooper again with the American Heart Association. I also wanted to follow up on the conversation around. Safe streets and, um, council member secondary, I heard you asked a question earlier of, um, Mr. Jonathan. About policies that he can potentially put in place, um, to support the design work. So. Um, the American Heart Association does in partnership with, um, Smart Growth America. And City Health and some other organizations who do this work. We have policy language. Um, and that was actually something that council member Lambert and I talked about a few months ago. We were in the early conversation, so I'm actually going to meet with Jonathan, um, you know, in the near future. So we can, I can lay out what the complete streets policy brain. Framework looks like and see if that's something that's feasible for Dunwoody, if y'all are interested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, city manager comments, Eric.
Yes, ma'am. We do need an executive session for real estate.
Okay. All right, uh, council comments, Rob.
Uh, just a couple of things I want to share real quick. One, uh, they've all taken off, um, but I just wanted to thank the Sustainability Committee members. Um, pretty much everybody that volunteers on our boards and, um, and committees for the city, um, are great people, but this committee. I know has a number of really highly qualified members. Who donate a lot of time and expertise, um, to the city. Uh, one in particular, I know. Um, donated some computer modeling that helped us do our greenhouse gas inventory last year. So that's. A, a lot of service that they're providing the city and I just appreciate that. Um, the other item I'm going to take is just a, a little bit of a personal note to recognize the Dunwoody High School tennis teams. Um, both the boys and girls were in the elite eight of the state tournament earlier today. Unfortunately, the girls lost a very close contest. Um, but in a more positive note, the boys won their very close contest and have moved on to the final four of the state tournament. So just congrats to both of those teams.
Yes.
I just, on a personal note, I'm surprised you didn't do it. Um, at our next council meeting, uh, Dunwoody High Graduation is May eleventh, so. At, you know, at our next council meeting, uh, you guys will have high school graduates. Just for the public to know, there are seven of us between council and staff that have seniors in high school. So congratulations to the seniors and, um, good luck.
Um, anybody else? Lemonade Days was a humongous success. It's always a huge thank you to Dunwoody Police. Um, and all the volunteers, but, um, there was a little drama. At this time, was it just last week or two weeks ago, whenever it was? And, um, Dunwoody Police, the cap schools police, even the cap emergency management stepped up to. To try to get it all settled and they did a great job. And our police got rave reviews, um. At the mostly drama-free Lemonade Days. So we appreciate it. And next up is the Arts Festival. All right, uh, go ahead, Stacy.
Move to exit to executive session for purposes of real estate.
Um, any objection?
Second.
Uh, Tom, John had already seconded. Um, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, we are going to executive session and then we'll be back. That is true. One, two, three. What was it? They lost what?